Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cummings. Ms. Gloss.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone. I apologize to my early attendees. Generally, we go into closed session right away, so I will apologize. I wish I had something to give you in the meantime, but I am going to call for a closed session, and you'll see us in an hour. So whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meetings, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. We will be back in an hour. Welcome back, everyone. Sorry about the short delay. We'll get right down to business. I'm going to ask Dr. Valeski to start with the superintendent's report, please.
Sure, President Lacks. Good evening. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Memorial Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Margaret Sasso. Cheryl Jones is the principal. The Hammerhill Sixth Grade students went on the first Fairview trip of the year on Monday, April 15th. They had two great days of weather that allowed them to enjoy the outdoor activities. While at Fairview, students enjoyed stations where they engaged in row boating, liminology, which is also freshwater ecology, archery, an ASE team-building obstacle course, and the famous ridge hike. The windy weather made for challenging boating, but students supplied their problem-solving skills and persevered to master rowing their boats. Throughout the day, students enjoyed frequent bald eagle sightings. At night, the students enjoyed a campfire sing-along experience and an entertaining animal show before heading to their cabins. I'd like to thank all the teacher coordinators who organized the trip, as well as the teacher and parent chaperones who made this trip possible. On Thursday, April 18th, school counselors Eric Kaplansky and Jessica Allen, along with the high school counseling department, organized a successful college and career fair in partnership with the East Brunswick Education Foundation. Over 100 college representatives, trade school representatives, military recruiters, and career professionals set up informational booths for students and parents to learn about post-secondary opportunities. Representatives in attendance included Princeton University, Rutgers University, University of Chicago, Savannah College of Art and Design, East Brunswick Police, Salon Professional Academy, and the National Guard, to name a few. And we were happy to see over 500 students and parents take advantage of this event. The fourth grade students at Irwin Elementary School recently presented their career day projects. Students researched future career of their choice to create trifles that included their careers' responsibilities, tools used, and the impact their job has on the community. In addition to their posters, students created resumes where they connected their individual skills and experiences to the expectations of their future careers. They also identified adults at school at home who could serve as references. Finally, students researched common interview questions for their careers and prepared answers for them in the point of view of their current selves or themselves as future adults. High school students in the AP IPOL represented New Jersey in the national We the People competition in Washington, D.C. Over 20 students, led by their teacher, Mark Mondray, participated in the event, which they presented arguments related to the U.S. Constitution, ranging from the importance of compromise in political debate to the legacy of Brown versus the Board of Education, and public education to modern technology and its impact on privacy rights. Each group of students faced eight minutes of follow-up questions from a panel of experts, including politicians, professors, lawyers, and federal judges. Final scores will be announced in the coming weeks. And today was district-wide Bring Your Child to Work Day, and it was a great success. Staff members with children ages six to 18 took this opportunity to bring their children to work, and this opportunity allows children to see the important work their parents do in East Brunswick public schools every day. Thank you.
You're welcome. As a reminder for the Board, we have moved our Take Your Child to Work evening to the next board meeting since one of our own, Tim Cummings, had a work commitment, because people tend to forget that we are volunteers and do actually have day jobs. So unfortunately, he had a work conflict and is down at a work event. But he's got three kids, so we'll hopefully have a very full day at the next meeting when we pretend it's Take Your Child to Work Day, Check Your Child to Work Day. Thank you so much. Our next item is a resolution of appreciation for the Parent Teacher Association. Do we have--
We're not going to do that tonight.
Oh, we're not doing it tonight?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's what I was just asking, Bernie. Okay. Okay. You know what that means. Chris, you're up.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm sure many of you guys know that it's Take Your Child to Work Day. I was hoping to see a few extra friendly faces up here, but I guess I have to wait one more week. But even at the high school, several of my friends and classmates have taken a day off to accompany their parents to their workplace, many of which had parents working in East Brunswick school districts, so that's always nice to see. I heard many of them had last. Apart from that, the senior class council held its annual senior staff variety show last Friday, which hosted several dancing, singing, and comedy routines, which were all a huge hit and raised profits that go towards our prom. So that's always an event to look forward to, and I had fun actually partaking in one of the dance routines there, so that was a nice experience. And on April 10th to 12th, the AP IPOL class at last got to compete in the national We the People competition in Washington, D.C., as well as tour DC and visit several historical monuments, my personal favorite being the Lincoln Memorial. It was a wonderful experience, and it was a nice weekend that we got to spend, and all wouldn't have been possible without the support of my advisor, Mr. Mondray, the alumni, and the many donors that helped to make the trip possible. And last week, the concert band and one ensemble went to their annual concert down in Roxbury to compete with other schools, and as well be given live feedback from adjudicators, which was a great, great experience. And finally, most students are beginning to prepare for the AP exams, which are coming up in a few weeks, so I wish all the students the best with their studies, and I hope all the parents understand some of the stressful times their kids go through, so take it a little bit easy on them. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Your enthusiasm is contagious. You can't help but smile when you listen to your reports, so thank you. Yes, absolutely. There'll be a tough act to follow. So we are now at the public hearing. I'm going to ask Mr. Giuliani to give the budget presentation, and then I will open it up for comments, and I will give instructions at that point, so.
Before Mr. Giuliani gets set up, last night, we had a public forum on the budget, and there was a question that was asked about a specific item last night that I didn't feel I gave an appropriate answer to. I felt last night as though I was constricted by items that were discussed in closed session we researched today, and Mr. Giuliani has an explanation for the question that was raised last night at the budget forum.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Good evening, everyone. So the first item, before we get into the budget details, has to do with the collection of school taxes. So let's talk a little bit about process on this. Firstly, there's a certificate of school taxes. It's something that is prepared. It's a document that's prepared, that is prepared by the district, is submitted to the township, that basically summarizes what's the amount of taxes that is going to be raised in the next year. It's sent to the township for verification, for counter-signature, and processing. The reason it's sent to the township is because the school district doesn't raise or collect the taxes. The township collects the taxes. That's what the legal process is. In the 2020-21 year, the certificate contained an error. It didn't include a portion of the debt service, which is the mortgage, a portion of that that was required. So as a result, that amount was not raised or collected from the local taxpayers. The taxpayers received a tax holiday since that amount was not included in the tax bill. The error was missed by both the township and the district. The township paid the district for the full amount that wasn't collected. In the summer of '22, the district discovered the error and communicated that information with the township. The Board subsequently unanimously approved reimbursement to the township for the amount that the township had paid to the district in error. The presentation on this issue was made at a public meeting in September of 2022. The funds that were used could not otherwise be used to support the district's regular operations. The issue is completely unrelated to the fiscal 2025 budget or any prior budget year. So let's go into the public hearing now on the budget, talk about some district facts. In terms of district operations, district is also a business. And some important facts. We're the 23rd-largest district in the state. That's as of the fall of 2023 Department of Education report. Last year, I believe, we reported we were the 26th or the 25th largest, so we've become even larger than we were previously. We are the largest employer in East Brunswick, and we have, in terms of our total population, 8,371 students. That was as of April of 2023, and that's excluding our staff population. So when you look at those numbers, we are essentially a town within a town. We operate a major transit system, 512 routes, all told throughout the course of the year. It's 3.82 million miles that are traveled. And when we look at the number of passengers from day to day, as if they were individual and separate passengers each day, we're transporting 2.5 million passengers, essentially, if we were a public transit system. We are a major food service provider. This is an analysis or listing of the annual meals served in comparison to restaurants and eateries in the public. When we look at our serving just through April, less than 180 serving days. We've served 479, almost 480,000 lunches, 213,000 à la carte meals, almost 70,000 breakfasts. So in comparison to major food service providers, we are up there. In terms of our facilities, when we compare what our facilities are in terms of what we're responsible for maintaining, in terms of buildings, in terms of land, the data speaks for itself. And there have been questions regarding what does the district do in terms of controlling costs and savings. And so here's a list of the kinds of things that the district does on a regular basis. We have a major energy program in place. We've got solar panels that have been installed on multiple buildings to try and reduce our energy costs. We cooperate with other districts regarding purchasing so that we can stretch the dollar. We've increased our in-house transportation services through multi-tier busing, and also by reducing the amount of cost that we spend on contracted services. I talked about that at the last meeting, I think at the meeting prior to that as well. We provide 60% of our total busing in-house. That's a complete flip from what it was a number of years back. We used to be at 40%. We've grown the fleet, and we provide a superior service. We want to grow that further, but the only way to grow that further is to have the appropriate facility to do that, and we're not in a position to acquire a new facility at this point. But that is something that is on the horizon that we need to look at seriously to help improve services and costs. We utilize the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for services as well as purchasing power. We cooperate with the township, with refinancing, utilization of services, and through the county of Middlesex as well. We've refinanced our debt a number of times. As interest rates have come down, we've refinanced the debt so that we can lower the cost to the taxpayers. And we have been involved with local and national purchasing cooperatives that also save money and allow us to stretch the dollar. And lastly, we're part of a dental consortium that keeps those costs controlled as well. We're a revenue producer. Through the community programs department, as well as our facility area, we provide services for early morning program, the after-school kids program, the early learning academy. We have services and programs for the SAT, PSAT, and ACT preparation, elementary enrichment, and the performing arts center rental. These areas provide significant revenue to the district that go to support the general fund budget and to offset costs, but also enable us to continue programs and services that the district has been accustomed to. I believe this was last year, but in terms of the excellence, numerous student school-based awards, Dr. Valeski reviewed those last night briefly, having put them up. We post that information in our annual audit. That information is talked about from one board meeting to the next as students are recognized, and that goes for the staff as well. According to the Middle States Association, which rendered its report about a year ago with regard to East Brunswick High School, without a doubt, one of the finest schools in the nation. It is a school that has a very strong academic program, supported by ample financial resources, and guided by excellent leadership. And for 2022, which is the last audit that the district was able to submit for analysis and review by the Association of Business Officials International and the Government Finance Officers Association, the district has been recognized for its excellence in financial reporting. You know, this is only possible after the close scrutiny of the independent auditor. This doesn't come easy. One need only review the auditor's public presentations that have been made here at board meetings, year after year after year, to hear what the auditor has to say in terms of financial management of this school district, and view the reports that are also posted online. They've been available to the public for years. The only area in the-- this is the only area, the only area for any school district that is subjected to an annual audit each year. It is scrutinized, analyzed, evaluated, and quite frankly, we are very proud of the financial oversight results that we have had consistently, year after year after year. And so let's talk about budget facts. The last meeting, I talked about the budget development process, and it is a lengthy process. It involves administrators throughout the district. It involves the Board Finance Committee. It involves the Board of Education. We started this process in November of 2023. We have a timeline for budget managers to provide their proposals. We have individual meetings with every person to discuss what their budgets represent, what are the priorities that need to be addressed. We go through a period of compilation, analysis, and discussion. We're looking at a, almost a $200 million budget. It takes time to go through with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that everything is correct. Budget finance meetings, we've had those, January, throughout the month of February, and then February 27th was the Governor's Funding Formula announcement. Two days before, East Brunswick and every other school district in this state received its information regarding how much state funding was coming. Two days. Continued finance committees were held in March. Tentative budget was adopted March 20th. Okay. Everyone's heard about the state aid reduction, $1.32 million. This chart shows the trend of state aid over a period of time. From 2009 through 2025, we had two upper years in 2009 and 2010. Then we had a significant cut in state aid in 2011. That was the last time we had a major cut that impacted our budget, and we had to make significant reductions across the board. Could not be foreseen. After that, you see that state aid remained relatively flat. Flat is a, it's an interesting term, because flat over time doesn't mean you're maintaining, you're actually reducing. You're not maintaining the level of revenue to support the costs that are going on. And so the burden has been transferred further onto the local taxpayer throughout the period. Beginning 2020, 2021, state aid started to increase. The state was making up for what it had not been funding appropriately in the past. And a footnote I'll add to this is that the state funding formula was enacted in 2008 but never put into place until this year. So our aid was going up, as it should have been, and it should have continued based on what the history had been. But unfortunately, we were faced with a shortfall that we learned about February 29th. This is an excerpt from a NewJersey.com report that was posted yesterday, and I'm going to read this. "New Jersey has fully implemented its revamped public school funding formula with the announcement of proposed state aid for the 2024-25 academic year. But you might not like what that actually means for your school district. Some districts will see major increases in state funding under the plan, while others can expect far less. Why the difference? The answers come down to the new funding formula that was enacted in 2018, or 2008, apologies, 2008. Under the 2025 budget proposed by Governor Phil Murphy, the new formula will be fully in place for the first time since it was passed." That means the state is using a new way of calculating how much money each of the state's nearly 600 school districts should get from the state budget. Those aren't my words. Those are the words of Katie Kausch, a reporter for NJ Advanced Media, and it coincides with the information that we've been communicating since we found out the news. So bear with me. I went through this last meeting. I will not spend as much time as the last board meeting, but I think it is important. And I talked about this a little bit at yesterday's forum regarding the impacts on state aid. There are, as we've analyzed the state aid formula as it's been implemented for this year, there are two elements that seem to have a specific impact upon how much state aid we would or would not receive. One of the elements is equalized valuation. Equalized valuation is the value of all the taxable properties in town that the state analyzes and puts on an equalized basis. What does equalized basis mean? No two towns are valued alike. If you look at your tax bill, and you look at what's the value of your property that the basis of your taxes are, it may not represent 100% of what your house may really be worth. So we've got towns where valuations are less than 100%. We have those that are close to 100%. East Brunswick's at about 20% of true value, generally speaking. The State Department of Treasury takes that information across the entire state for every town and brings them all to a standard where they compute what would those towns be at 100%? And that value at 100% is what goes into the state formula. When we look at the data, we look at what those increases have been over the years. East Brunswick didn't make this up. This comes from the Department of Treasury and feeds into the state funding formula. You see, going from the bottom up, very small increase from '21 to '22, more of an increase from '22 to '23, a bit more of an increase from '23 to '24, and then going from '24 to '25, you see a large increase, $800 million. When we worked through the model that we created, and we tried to replicate what the state formula is, the, and we did a what-if. What if state aid, or I'm sorry, the equalized value changed by $100 million? We did a what-if. We'll go $100 million more. What did that mean in the formula? That resulted in approximately $500,000 reduced in state aid. So as the value of the town's properties increases, it has an impact on how much state aid we get to the negative. It gets us less money. That's not where the big problem is. Now let's look at district income. This is looking at the income from the entire community, households, businesses. We can't find this data. This comes from the Department of Treasury Division of Taxation. It's fed from that area directly to the Department of Education to plug into the state formula. According to this, you see what those changes have been in district income. You see, going from the bottom up, there was a slight decrease from '21 to '22, then there was an increase from '22 to '23, a slight increase then from '23 to '24, and then from '24 to '25, a very big increase in district income. then, from '24 to '25, a very big increase in district income. So, we did another what-if. What if district income were to increase $100 million? And that by far has the largest impact in state aid, because that $100 million change in that formula results in approximately a $2.5 million reduction in state aid. That's the 2008 formula, fully implemented for the first time this year. Something that we haven't seen before, that no one's seen before. There've been all kinds of plugs that have happened at the state level, and no forewarning. In the state formula, there are two calculations. One is uncapped state aid that says, "This is the amount that you probably should get," these are my words, "you probably should get." But then, the calculated amount where the state says, "But this is the amount that you'll receive." The calculated state aid, there, in addition to the other components that I talked about, it's going to be driven by student enrollment, how many students are classified in special education, how many ESL language proficient students there are. It's going to be driven by a whole host of issues. But the calculated state aid was always based on, here's a pot of money that the state set aside, and while you should have gotten a different amount, you're really only going to get this other amount. What you can see between the two now for 2024-25 is that they're the same, again reflective of the fact that state aid, or the state formula, was just first implemented this Let's talk about some of the other impacts. Health benefits for existing staff. Overall, our health benefits rates for next year will go up approximately 7%. Couple of areas, I think, maybe slightly higher than that. This was a question that came up last night, and we don't have information from our claims at an early date. We don't get that information until sometime in February to be able to do a projection on what that health benefit cost impact is going to be. Why? Because the carriers don't like to give any information out based on a lack of claim data. They want to look at what's the data. So, from July through the month of January or February, gives some of the data to be able to make reasonable assertions as to what that rate increase would be. Prior to that, they wouldn't give us any information to be able to project. Charter school increase. Charter school increase is going up $740,000. People may be tired of hearing about the charter school, but it still bears repeating. It's $740 additional thousand dollars coming out of the school district budget. Take that on top of the state aid reduction. It's a lot of money. When we look at how much is being allocated for the charter school out of the school budget, it's $5.8 million. That $5.8 million didn't happen overnight. $740,000 did happen overnight. But over the period of time, for approximately 311 students as of right now, we've cumulatively had to pay about $44 million. We don't have a choice. We also don't need a charter school. So, what are the budgetary impacts? First, I want to start by saying, involved in the, well, I'll talk about this in a minute. So, let's go through the budgetary impacts. State aid reduction, $1.3 million. There's nothing new here that hasn't been said previously. Charter school increase, we just talked about. Special education out-of-district tuition, almost $1.2 million. Out of our control. It's out of our control. And it's not because there are more students going into out-of-district placements. From last year's budget to the proposed budget, there are, and these are real students, there's no buffer in there to say, "Well, we've got to put some additional money aside for students that aren't here yet." There's real students. Two additional students. I believe the number is up to, was up to 56 students in total in out-of-district placements. $1.2 million in additional costs. It's out of control. We don't have control over that. The private schools for the handicaps set rates. And then, not only do they set rates that we budget for, I can tell you, this year, they've come back to us to say, "You know, the tuition we told you that you had to pay for each student, that wasn't enough. We've had some changes, and, by the way, we're going to charge you more instead." We don't have a choice. Contractual salary increases. We have two unions for which collective bargaining agreements have been negotiated over a lengthy period of time. And we have non-unit staff, people that are not represented by either bargaining unit. The contractual salary increases are almost $3.9 million. The health benefits increase, approaching $3.3 million. New special education positions that were required in the current year but not budgeted. You know, you see that, and you might say, "Well, why didn't you budget for them? Did you make a mistake?" No. These are positions that arose after the budget was struck for the current year. These are positions that arose because of displaced students that have moved into district, that have arose because of additional classifications, additional IEPs. These are positions that were required to comply with the law, federal and state. There's no choice. There's no choice. And we should provide the services, but the money has to come from somewhere, because there isn't a printing press in the back room printing off $20 bills for us to use. There are put a counseling services. This has been supported through federal funds for the last several years. Those federal funds expire. They were COVID funds. They're not in existence anymore. It's $572,000. Transportation contracts for the contracted services, a 3% CPI, Computer Price Index adjustment is what we budgeted. The state told us we need to budget at almost 6%. That's not happening. We can't do that. We're going to negotiate, we've been negotiating with the companies, trying to get them down to zero if we can, and not spend that additional money. But we don't have a choice, because in the end, we have to transport the students. And our custodial services contract, $245,000. All told, $12.8 million. Their additional revenue offsets that we were able to identify. And part of that, quite frankly, is utilizing what's called bank cap. What's bank's cap? Taxes. Was that a priority? No, the board didn't want to have to raise additional taxes beyond the base 2%, but that's something that had to be done to try to minimize the impact. So, where does that leave us? $7.8 million in additional funding required. Where is it coming from? And that's where we have to then be faced with making tough decisions. And they're not easy decisions. They are painful, incredibly painful. And the last thing that we want to do is impact staff. But unfortunately, when we look at the composition of the budget, the composition of the budget is such that 69, about 69.5% of the budget is salary and benefits. It's people, because we're a people business. The other 30%, it's not pencil and papers. It's not duplicating paper. What are the mandatory things that we have to provide? We have to provide OTPT services, occupational therapy and physical therapy for special needs students. We have to provide utilities, gas and electric, to keep our buildings open and operating. We have to provide physical services, medical services. We have to provide cleanliness of our facilities and custodial services. We have to provide transportation services. And the list goes on and on of what we have to provide, of what we have to do. So, there's very little in the area of, you know, what we can just cut and do without. But we tried to do that, to see where we would go, what we would be able to come up with to help bridge the gap. And the process was not an isolated process. The process involved many administrators coming to the table and working through to try to identify what can we do? What can we do? And there was a lot of stress going through that process to identify what it was that we needed to do, because the last thing anyone wanted to do was impact staff. But when we're looking at $7.8 million, there's no choice. There's no choice but to ultimately have an impact on staff. Non-personnel reductions, supplies, mailing, printing costs, those are easy ones. Purchase service contracts, what does that involve? Well, couple of areas. One being substitute teacher costs, and looking at how we handle certain things differently so that we're not going to encourage as much in substitute teacher costs. I think there was a comment last night regarding substitute teachers, and I can't remember if it was made last night or at another meeting, and the amount of teachers that are absent, amount of staff that are absent. This is not a East Brunswick issue. First of all, there was a change in the law that enables staff, and this just happened recently, within the last year, that enables staff to utilize sick time for more than just sick time. And I'm not making an argument one way or the other on that. I think that folks need to be able to take time when they need to take time. But that has an impact on attendance, and it has an impact on the number of subs that are needed to be able to cover classes for students. It's not a new issue. It's been an issue for a number of years. But part of the issue also is that we've got post-pandemic attendance issues. It's not just East Brunswick. You look at any district across the state, and there are issues with regard to regular attendance. Talk to any, and we have, we've talked to our providers for the substitute services. They cannot staff, and none of the providers can fully staff what's needed across the state because of the level of absenteeism that exists. Moving graduation to the high school, that will happen for next year. Field trip adjustments. February will be a one-day trip, not an overnight. That will save 360 substitute teacher days. Professional development. Professional development will be limited over the summer, greatly reduced from what it's been in the past, and there will be no professional development that requires any substitute teacher coverage. Technology replacements. We're deferring textbook replacements and related material. Various stipends have been eliminated, and we're deferring selected maintenance items for one year. And that didn't bring us nearly enough to what we needed to do. And so, unfortunately, these next two slides reflect the personnel reductions. And I'm just going to post them up there for your review. What's the human impact? 25 reductions in force. It's people losing their jobs because of the budget. Non-contract renewals, these happen from year to year anyway, for various reasons, performance, whatever, could be something along those lines. There are five. Eight positions are currently unfilled. They will not be filled. Those positions will be abolished. 13 staff members are retiring, and those positions will go as well, for a total of 51 positions being eliminated. There was a comment regarding class size, and this is not a new slide. This has been presented at every meeting that we've had on the budget. Class sizes, projected average class sizes, K to four, remain in the range and unchanged from last year. That's important. Dr. Valesky said last night that the decisions were made to have the least direct impact on students, and that's what this is. I talked about the percentages before, salaries and benefits and all other. The total budget is $197.6 million. The budget tax levy, $5.7 million. The last meeting, we reported that that was a little bit less than that. The board has given consent for that to go up. There's no more for us to go. The general fund tax levy will go up 4.11%, over the current year. The debt service fund, which is the fund that pays our mortgage, that's going down for next year by 6%. So thankfully, if one can say that, it brings the overall tax levy increase a little bit less, down to 3.76%. And unfortunately, it's not showing up on the slide, but that tax levy includes $2.9 million in bank's cap and a health benefit adjustment increase. Those are taxes. Those are the state's terms, but those are taxes. And this budget represents all of the budget, all of the adjustments since the tentative budget was adopted. Folks, this is a call to action, and it started last night. Dr. Valesky talked about it. There were members of the community that came forth to talk about it. It is time to get real. We can't do it on our own. The issue is not here. The issue is with our legislators. We need you to help. And so, we've got up here... And so we've got up here who the legislators are that represent East Brunswick. We've got the state assembly speaker, the state senate president, the governor, the state senate education committee members, or at least the leadership on that, there were too many people to list, and the state assembly education committee chairs.
Mr. Juliana, I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. This will also be on our website, if it isn't already, for the public to access. But I also wanted to mention two important things. We have submitted through the Department of Education a review of the application of the state funding formula, asking them to recalculate it to see if there were any errors in the calculation. That's currently ongoing. We confirmed with the county superintendent this morning, that's ongoing. Tonight, I confirmed that there was an Assembly Bill forty-one sixty-one that was supposed to supplement educational funding, but had a lot of provisions in it. There is a companion senate bill that is being worked on, being crafted, is in committee. I was told tonight that it's likely they will vote on that on May ninth. So we are waiting for that outcome to see if there's any movement on that legislation that would give relief to school districts like ours who suffer this kind of financial loss. So I just wanted to update everybody on that.
The final budget adoption will take place on May ninth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana. I just want to say, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. I'm happy to see so many residents out here. I'm unhappy about why you're out here. This is indeed a really difficult time, but you have to remember something. The people that are on this dais are working for you, not against you. And I implore you, social media is wonderful for getting people mobilized. It's wonderful for certain types of information, posting pictures of your kids, asking questions, but it can be a very, very big proponent in the spread of misinformation. You can call Dr. Valesky's office. You can go on the website to get facts. Unfortunately, the problem is, they're not policed on social media. So people are put into panics. It's happened, we've seen it happen before in this district, where somebody puts out information without anyone checking it. They run with it. They say, this is what's happening, this is facts, when in fact, unfortunately, a lot of times, they are not facts. We are Board of Education members currently. There are people that have served on the Board of Education. It's wonderful when you've done your time, but the reality is, because you once served on the Board of Education, does not mean that you know what's going on currently. It also does not mean that you get to take things from privileged conversations in closed session and spread misinformation. And I will just say, there's been things out there that have talked about misinformation. These gentlemen, you've seen it from Bernie, and I apologize, I am not a politician, I am a little bit nervous and I'm freezing. We have, year after year, been cited for our clean order reports, for our financial excellence. This gentleman and his team do a phenomenal job. You heard the explanation for what was thrown out there last night as if there's a three million dollar deficit that we've hidden from you somehow because there's some type of mistake that's been made. That's not the case. And that was information that was used to try and discredit these gentlemen. You've been told that we have closed-session meetings and that we talk about things and there's no transparency. There are certain issues, personnel issues, security issues, these are things that we need to talk about in closed session. We had a meeting, we were bashed for a meeting during our budget season, when we had to move a meeting to 5:00 PM. It was not a public meeting. By law, we always have to offer you the opportunity to talk, but the meeting was at 5:00, not to hide anything, but because every single member of this board works somewhere else. And we had hours and hours where we painstakingly went through the budget to try and figure out how to get the best possible solutions in a horrible, horrible setting. And somebody put it out there and said, well, they're doing this to try and hide it from the public. That's not the case. If you have questions, please ask. You have a former Board of Education member that voted for every single increase that he therefore says, hey, the board votes for this and that. You have a former Board of Education member that sat up on this dais during the beginnings of these problems and said to our budget managers, well, tell me what more I can give you. You've told me what you need, tell me what you want now. How much more can I do? And then decided to quit the board and decide, I'm going to not be part of the solution. I'm going to throw stones and say, oh, well, you know what, you're doing something wrong. Please, if you want information, go to the website, look at former meetings. Go to the meetings, you can see the votes of the board and how people voted. I promise you, as I said, we have a member that's not here tonight because he is at a work event. The people up here are volunteers. Three of us work in nonprofit, a couple of us are teachers. We are all volunteers. We all have children either in the district or have graduated through the district. We are here because we want this district to be well-run and a wonderful place for your children. And if you don't think that our hearts aren't breaking for what is going on, I assure you they are. And last night, you couldn't say this, but I can, last night, people called into question his credibility, his service to the armed forces. You know, this is a military man from a military family who's given his service. That is not something that you take lightly. And people said, you know what, you should take away his raises. I don't know if anybody did the math, but Dr. Valesky's salary, the three point eight million dollars that you saw that's across the board, from our absolutely lowest paid to the highest paid in the district, his increase next year is seventy-five hundred dollars. And I haven't said a word to him about whether he wants to freeze it or not. Seventy-five hundred dollars is not going to restore jobs. I wish it were. And I can answer for him, but my guess is, is if it would, he probably would freeze it for this district, because he does everything in his power, as do we. So I just wanted to say, please, use social media, come out for your, look, I wish we had this type of crowd every time. Come out, advocate for your kids, advocate for your issues, but I am begging you, do not just take the word of people on social media that are just trying to get people upset. There are real things up here. There's real pain and real things to be upset about. I'm sure that that was a very hard presentation for you, but I am begging you, please, do not let people that don't want to be part of the solution and only want to make problems for other people, do not let them be where you get your information. So I'm sorry for my outburst, but I just felt that it had to be said. This is your time. I just want to make a few things clear. This part right now is the public hearing. So anyone that wishes to speak can speak for up to three minutes. You can only speak on the budget. After this, you'll notice there's going to be a public portion, which you can speak on anything. And out of fairness, because we had a lot of people, I am going to ask if you could please keep your remarks to three minutes. Again, everything right now is just on the budget portion and anything else we're going to do after. Did you want to speak? If you could just come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Sillfani, with the two Morgan-Casey's Brunswick. And I'm a part of the class of two thousand twenty-one. I'm at a loss of words right now, because many people may not know Dr. Lou Figueroa, but they are absolutely affected by this impact. He oversees critical and time-sensitive scenarios directly impacting students, such as anti-bullying, mental health services, including counseling. So I ask, who's going to take over these responsibilities? Will it be someone who has the same experience as Dr. Figueroa? Will they have the same training and certifications? If you care so much about the students' well-being, why are you cutting the superintendent of student services and counselors? How is that helping students? There will never be an English or math emergency, but students facing a behavioral crisis happens on a frequent basis. Out of all the superintendents, you chose to cut the one that impacts students the most. Another important person is Jamie Kennard, who has made it possible to graduate the high school with an associate's degree through the dual enrollment program, and oversees summer school for ESL and special ed students. She also runs the Flex program, which has many students graduate rather than dropping out of high school and keeping EB a top-rated school. Who's going to fill her shoes? Delegating these tasks to current administrators will only cause burnout, and it will not run smoothly. I'd also like to point out, Dr. Figueroa and Mrs. Kennard are at almost every athletic event, home and away. Where are you guys? Mr. Buliana, over the summer, why did you focus on removing every single coffee maker and microwave from every school instead of focusing on the budget?
I didn't know it was the business administrator's job to take care of facility management. This is no longer the school I used to love, and I'm no longer proud to call myself a bear. And regarding the arts issue, I see my former history teacher is in attendance, so I must say, please don't let history repeat itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sillfani. Hi, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure will. Butch Seltzer, 590 Route 18. Strap in, folks. I have a little story for you. My kid is graduating from the Berklee College of Music. She is an East Brunswick graduate. She is going to be very famous, and I'm very happy for her. I'm going to rewind to about 2013, when that same kid told me that she wanted to kill herself. She was attending school, she was severely bullied, she was threatened with death, and didn't know where to go. That man saved my child's life. He didn't turn his back. He didn't walk away. He called every night to my house to talk to my kid and make sure that she was okay. Every night. He came to every one of her performances all through school, whether it was chorus or it was theater. And after it, walked up and said, great job. He went to Down Monroe's reunion concert, or it was something, that my kid went to, brought his daughter, who wanted a picture with my kid, because his daughter knew that my kid was going to be famous one day. But he came, and he hugged my kid. And it was a love that I saw between them that made me feel good. That's Lou Figueroa. That's a man who should be sitting exactly where he's sitting. Mr. Juliana, no disrespect, I don't know you. It's very interesting that you talked about the school being a business. This is freaking East Brunswick Public Schools. We're not a business. We care about our kids. We care about what they're going to be, where they're going to be.
Ten seconds.
Not two days from now, but twenty years from now. That man sits there today, and my child is about to broaden her world like you wouldn't believe.
Time.
Because of Lou Figueroa. That man deserves to be here.
Sir, sir, your time is up.
I understand. That man deserves to be here.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
And he shouldn't leave.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana.
Thank you, Mr. Sillfani.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Diana. I'm good. I can reach it. I'm good.
I need the steps, that's why I asked.
I'm Diana Weiner, for A Memorial Drive. I graduated from the high school in 2013. I'm here for Dr. Figueroa. He's done a lot for special ed in this district, and please stay in this district, we need
Hi, everybody. First of all, I know you guys are volunteers.
I'm sorry if you could, Amy, state your name and address.
Amy Levine, To Win Beam Court. I know you guys are all volunteers. I volunteer too, as a lot of you know, but nothing like what you guys do, so I appreciate it. I'm a twenty-five-and-a-half-year resident of East Brunswick. I'm a parent of a class of 2018 East Brunswick Public School graduate, and I'm a parent of a 2017 Bancroft Special Needs School graduate. I'm here to support Dr. Lou Figueroa. I still can't say his name after all these years. Letting him go would be a huge detriment to East Brunswick Public Schools. His leadership over special ed, mental health nursing, guidance, et cetera, and athletics has been instrumental in helping both the students and the staff. And part of the reason why his department runs so well is because of him. I heard discussions last night, oh, you know, this director will report there, this director will report there. Think about it, a lot of us are in business. We get new man, we're doing our job really well, we have great leadership. All of a sudden, we don't have that leader anymore. Are we still have that motivation? Do we still have that passion? That's what I'm really, really afraid of with the staff. With him, okay, before he started in 2011, and I know Vicki Beckright thinks he's the only person on the board from back then, the special ed department, I'm really, was in shambles. We had a lot of turnover, no one stayed. We finally got Sharon Alaskeva to really turn it around. And thankfully, Dr. Lou came, and they had worked together in Edison, and that partnership set the basis for the special ed department that we have today. Would I be able to go into Sharon's office and say, and have a coffee, you know, Scott pulled my hair, I got pulled over by the police? What am I going to do? Going out of district, the area? I don't know what to do anymore. He's beating us up. Could I go sit with her and have a chat like that, the director of special ed, without someone like him overseeing it? I don't know. I had a really, really dark period. Some of you in this room know about it. If it wasn't Sharon, it was doctor, everybody was there, everybody helped me. One day, she sat down with me and said, look, you know, you want to go out of district? Yeah. And it was really hard, and my younger one.
Ten seconds.
Okay, my younger one, fortunately, Mrs. Blaylock, was able to give him counseling for having a sibling with special needs. He even lost our next-door neighbor in fifth grade.
Time.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blaylock. If you could just start with your name and address for the record.
Brian Harkavy, 33 Sterns Road. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Brian Harkavy. I am an alumnus of the East Brunswick Band Program, a music educator, and a lifelong community member of East Brunswick. Before I get to what's written, I do want to say one extra thing. Unfortunately, in 2019, I lost my younger sister to suicide. She was an alumnus of this district, and obviously, I have no blame for this district. They did the best they could for her at the time. And it heartens me to hear that there is someone here like Dr. Figueroa going out of his way, helping these students, and it makes me so sad to hear that he is one of the administrators we are going to lose. Now to get to my speech. I rise today, like many others, to address my concerns over cuts being proposed to the East Brunswick Band Program by the BOE and Dr. Valesky. I would like to address three specific points. What pullout lessons offer from the perspective of a music educator? Why instrumental education is important to the elementary school environment? And what the band program means to me? I'd first like to acknowledge a difficult position that you are all in. There are cuts, these cuts from state aid and the budget shortfall will not be easy to address. One of the schools I work for as an educator for the marching arts is facing an even higher budget shortfall that has snowballed over the last three years from S2. I do not envy your position. However, as public servants and public employees, it is your duty to make those hard decisions in ways that hopefully affect the least amount of damage to the student population. Making such a large cut to a program that encompasses seventy percent of the student body is not a way to do it. There are districts that dream of having the band numbers that we have, of having the band program that we have. Cutting this program is short-sighted and will lead to greater loss for our lower elementary schools. So why is this such a detrimental loss to our music program? Fourth grade is one of the best times for students to start an instrument. It is a point in their educational growth where they are open to great change and a point in their coordinated development. where they, they are open to great change and a point in their coordinated development that lets them start working on more complicated tasks such as playing a wind or string instrument. At this point in their education, it helps to develop their fine motor skills, critical thinking, and creativity. Furthermore, the lower elementary model of small group pullout lessons is the optimal way to learn an instrument in a student's first year. Instrumental lessons are vital to the lower elementary environment. Having an instrumental program in the elementary schools offers many benefits such as elevating the status of the final year school, giving younger students something to look forward to and to look up to, and gives students more ways to learn and achieve. I can remember being in Frost Elementary School and always being excited to see the band and orchestra perform. When I would see the older students bringing their instruments into the school, I knew I wanted to be just like them. It also made me excited and motivated to work hard to get the grade, to get to the grade where I could finally choose an instrument. I was pulled out of my classes, but many times, those were the best parts of my day.
Time.
Thank you, Mr. Harkavy.
Thank you.
Good evening. Audrey Weiner, 4 Memorial Drive, East Brunswick. And my daughter got up to speak. She's an alumni of special education and I attribute all of her success to this district and leaders like Dr. Figueroa. And why? Because he knows the difference between special ed not being under one roof. So every special ed student doesn't get the same services. Every special ed student with the same disability has different needs. And this is what this man brings to the table. Academics, social, emotional. He understands every aspect and continues to try for our kids to thrive, get jobs, transition to adult life. It just goes on and on. I don't think just anybody could do that job. It's something that takes extra training. It's like going to your general practitioner. Are you gonna let him do heart surgery on you? So it's not something you can just give to anybody to delegate those responsibilities. It's something that he works hard at. He makes sure there's job sites out there for our kids. It's not something every single person can do. I have all my faith in a man like this. We've had other assistant superintendents. There's no bad, but Dr. Figueroa is exceptional and there's no one who cares as much as he does. He provides resources. He's there for kids, for the families. There's just not enough words to say how much this man does in this district. We cannot, my, my daughter's out of school, so to me, she's succeeded. But this district cannot be without a man like this. It, it would be a loss to this district. So when you're putting everything together, I hope you can consider other ways other than letting a man who brings so much to this town in special education, it's such a specialized area. So, we need you, Lou.
If you'd like to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jim Logan, 30 Myrtle Road, East Brunswick. I had a different angle for how I thought I would want to address the comments this evening, but listening to the numbers presentation from Mr. Juliana and, and the comments that have been portrayed already, I think I'd like to approach this a slightly different way. So, we all know this is a very difficult situation and no one wants to be in this situation, clearly. My question is perhaps, have we had enough time to think about, are we taking a bad situation and making it worse as opposed to looking at, and I'm not even implying that the analyses have not been rigorous, and I'm not trying to imply that they haven't been done justly. It's not at all where I'm going with this. However, if you look at other programs, even in the sports, and people, most people in this room will know, you know, for 13 years I've been involved with East Brunswick baseball and softball. I'm involved with the Booster Club and the high school. But if the financial impacts to removing a quality individual who frankly, I'm proud to call a friend, so I am biased, I'll just put that out there. But on a personal level, the types of services that he's responsible for, it's not just about what we've heard so far about mental health and other attributes. It's security, it's nursing, it's mental health, it's threat awareness, it's being the liaison to fire EMS, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just curious if we really can take that risk of putting the at-risk population of our students at a lower, even lower disadvantage by removing this quality individual from our program. And I know, the money's gotta come from somewhere. It obviously has to come from somewhere, but can we take a pause? Is there a way as a board that you can think a little bit longer on the trade-offs? Eliminate middle school sports. Half the, half the schools that we go and play against, they can't even field the freshman team. No one wants to cut sports. But if that is one of the painful trade-offs we have to make in order to preserve the quality of what we need to be doing for our children in this community, that's the individual that I'd want in there. I don't want to see any of these 30 people lose their jobs. Everyone's talking, rightly so, about Lou, but there's 30 people who are losing their jobs. Once you take out retirements and the eight positions, no one wants to see that. That's, that's horrible. It's tragic. But we've all been there in different walks of life before and we've had to make these painful decisions. I'm just saying, let us take another pause and look at, is there somewhere else we could try to make up this deficit and preserve the integrity that this man brings to the table? Thank you very much.
Rong Sun Pu, 54 Cortland Drive. Dear Dr. Valeski, members of the Board of Education and other members of the East Brunswick School Administration, I would like to say that what a great job I believe East Brunswick teachers, staff, and administrators have been doing for the 20 years that I have been a resident here. Not to mention the uncertain times that all of you worked so hard to navigate how to safely open schools during COVID, which was not so long ago, and let's not forget it. East Brunswick has a skeletal crew as it is, without the layoffs and the retirements and not filling those empty classrooms. Guess how many administrators are at Yale University? Over 5,000. Guess how many administrators are at Harvard? Over 7,000. What I'm getting at, we have a skeletal crew. East Brunswick school people, including all of you up here, do not work from nine to five. They work from five to nine. No one is overpaid here. I should know. I'm a parent here. I'm also a teacher, although at a higher education institution, which I have to say is a much easier job than educating underage kids. And I work very hard. I can tell you that. It is the people who work at EB schools that make EB schools so enviable. People say, "Oh, East Brunswick, smart people, good people there." In a difficult time like this, I know how difficult it is for all of you. I don't envy where you are. Let's keep the people who have made EB schools great, including our beloved assistant superintendent, teachers, directors, supervisors, secretaries, specialists, counselors, technicians, and janitors. I don't know how. You guys are the decision makers, but maybe let's make some shared sacrifice. Furloughs? Maybe, just maybe. As residents, I would like to remind everyone and I encourage everyone, also take on the task of calling, emailing, and lobbying state legislators to change the school funding formula, which sound to me is very unfair. After all, East Brunswick and the people who work or live here should not be punished by its hard-earned achievements. Thank you.
Erin Jenkins, 24 West Anheuser Street. My children graduate this year, so why am I here? I'm here because they graduate because of him. And I'm sorry to be emotional. It is because of Lou. My daughter got her IEP and is an A student. It is because of Lou my other daughter is alive. When she was threatened to be killed publicly over social media, he reached out to me on a Sunday. I'm still waiting for calls back from her GLA and the former principal. This was in '21. This man is beyond an asset to this district. Letting him go puts every child at risk. I know the money has to come from somewhere. But at this stage, in the life that we live now, I know my kids are safe at school because of what he does with security. I know my kids are safe in their development and they will be good adults and good people because of the education he helped my daughter get. Balls were dropped. He didn't hesitate to pick them up. It was not his responsibility. He did not drop anything, but he swooped right in and handled it. And for that, I will be forever grateful. But mainly because my daughters are alive because of this man. I'm sorry. Taking him away is too much of a detriment to this community. Though my kids will be gone, yours will all be here. And I care about this district. No, I didn't grow up here. I'm from Spotswood. I don't know this district. It overwhelms me and it scares the crud out of me, to put it nicely. The only legitimate way I can ever understand Dr. Louis Figueroa not having his title is because he's earned a higher title. I thank you very much.
Phil Asp, 2018 Princeton Road. Hold on to your seats. I'm from Old Bridge. My daughter decided to settle down in East Brunswick and I have two beautiful grandchildren that kid. Lou Figueroa I've known since 2002. I was supervisor of guidance and he was assistant principal. Lou has this special gift. If he disciplines a kid on Wednesday, the very next day he'll go through a wall to help that same kid. He's a special person. I'm proud to be his friend and you're making a big mistake. And I am, I don't mean personally, but figure out something else. You got a gem here. Don't blow it. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Wilbur Pan, 223 Milton Road. Just for transparency, I have put my name in for consideration for one of the two open board seats, just so everybody knows. I'm a little bit of mixed mind coming up here because I'm not sure if what I'm gonna say is gonna alter whatever's gonna happen from that, but. I, I really came up here for four asks and the gentleman over there who talked about maybe reframing the situation that we're in, I, I, I do very much appreciate that, that viewpoint. This is a bad situation. It's an extremely bad situation. From what I know, this has happened one time in somewhat recent history here. And, but what heartens me is that we actually got through that period of time. So even though it's a bad situation, it's not an unsolvable, unsolvable situation. And the other thing is that, and I know this from many, many different experiences, that when bad things happen, the first impulse is to think, oh, we're all alone. And we're not alone. There are, 20% of the school districts in the state have the same situation that we have right now with the state funding cuts leading to a bad financial situation. South Brunswick is one of them. And so I have a few asks. First of all, for the people in this room, go on YouTube, look up the South Brunswick Board of Education. There is a presentation on March 21st and a presentation on March, April 11th. The one on April 11th, go to, skip ahead to 40 minutes and into the video. There's a lot of extra stuff at the beginning. But the reason is that they actually did an extremely good job explaining their financial situation. And although the details are different, my takeaway from my, spending the time to watch those videos, it's a little bit over an hour, maybe 45 minutes if you want to skip the Q and A stuff. The, the details are different, but the situation's actually pretty much the same. The same factors that have led to the cuts they've had to face over the past six years are the same ones that we're facing this year. We just got lucky over the past few years because of the timing of the implementation. Second thing is, take, there's a lot of passion in this room and that's awesome because that means that we care about the school district. Take that passion and focus on solutions. It's easy to get caught up in blaming and Monday morning quarterbacking and that's fine. It's a natural human response, but it's not gonna solve the problem. And we need to solve this problem fast. The third is, there's a lot of people in this room, but we all have friends. Tell your friends because we can do a lot. With our friends, we can do more. And with people in other towns, we can do even more, which leads to the point that's already been made, which is call your legislators. And finally, for you guys, we're gonna have this situation next year, whether or not I'm up there. We should have maximal transparency in terms of this process. Not enough transparency, but maximal. Thanks.
Danielle Vietto, 23 Bradford Road. So I, like this gentleman, came here with a whole speech that I'm completely trans, completely changing. So I first want to say I agree with the transparency in regards to South Brunswick. I feel like, leading up to this, I think the presentation that was given today about the formula would have benefited you last night. I think that you got a beating last night. I think that if you started a little bit with that information, it might have helped alleviate some of the anger. In regards to, this is education, but it's a business. So I'm gonna put that out there. I work in healthcare. Healthcare's a business. This is a business. They're running a business. So we can't lose sight of that and people are getting very emotional. And like I said, I had a whole different speech. I see that you're beloved and I, I, I'm sure you are and I'm, I know everyone wants everyone to keep their job, but where's the money gonna come from, guys? If everyone here loves everyone and every position that, and no one wants to, to, no one wants to lose their job, then if we're this affluent community, then maybe we need to talk about taxes. I'm gonna get shot in the parking lot. I know that. But what I'm saying is, right, if, if this year, going to the legislators, yes, we have to do that, but that's not gonna make a difference today. It's not gonna make a difference tomorrow. So how are we gonna get the money? Are we leveraging all the resources with our town, with our mayor? Are there things that we're not doing to talk about the revenue increase that we can do now rather than cutting these positions? I don't know those answers. I'm not on the board. I'm not in finance. But what I'm saying is, if we all care this much about the people and our kids, then we need to put our money where our mouth is.
Hi, Mark Sizmar, 100 Fresh Pond Road. First of all, thank you. I know and appreciate the hard work that all the dayists do. And I know, seven of you are volunteers and I know Tim's not here. Last night I made a suggestion to explore an option to go for a vote, to go over the 2% cap to save all the jobs lost. It wasn't a criticism of your hard work. It was a compliment to our caring residents that probably would have approved it. So here we are. So I'm gonna focus on saving Dr. Figueroa's position. Dr. Valeski, I know you said the work would be distributed and I, and I understand that. We have competent staff. But let's look at redistribution of work if we lost an assistant superintendent. If we lost the assistant superintendent of academics, we have two directors and 12 supervisors to accept that load. If we lost the assistant superintendent of business and support operations, there's two directors and several managers to accept the load. You take away Lou, there's only one director and seven supervisors to accept that load. See the discrepancy? Removing the assistant superintendent of student activities and services will, I repeat, will have huge student impact, even though you said you're trying to limit it. I could go on for days telling you about the exemplary confidence of Dr. Figueroa. I only have three minutes though, and you guys are doing a great job. Dr. Vannella retired. It created a $200,000 breakage, which means there's, there's replacement has to be made. Hire from within, maybe even moving one of the directors to be the high school principal. Don't hire from the outside for that position and I'll tell you why. Because no one would lose their job at that point. We could keep Lou and potentially save. There's also a line item that I spoke about last night, Dr. Valeski. You said, "Go find it in the budget." It's not there for the, for the public anymore. So I had a guess. There's still a line item in the budget with, with money that I estimate around $110,000 based on historical raises for admin, which we don't know yet. If you combine those two moves, in my opinion, Dr. Figueroa stays. No one else gets, gets lost. The district will suffer for years to come if you make a mistake of letting Dr. Figueroa go. He's performed his job in it. He's performed his job in an exemplary manner. He's done nothing wrong. He lives in and is in the fabric of our great township. I've never heard a standing ovation for an administrator before like I saw tonight. So thank you for that. I implore you, make some changes before May 9th. Keep Dr. Figaro. That's it. Thank you.
Jennifer Figaro, 101 Ruslane. I want to thank the board for their hard work and support of student services and my husband, Dr. Lou Figaro, for the past 13 years. I know how hard your jobs must be. All of you have families and work that you do. As an Edison teacher, I know how hard I work. I know there's an Edison teacher on the board. I appreciate all of you and what you do for this community. That's why I'm here tonight. I'd like to discuss impact to the community when it comes to losing a special person like Lou. Lou is not a nine-to-five employee. Lou and the people he is so grateful to work with in student services work seven days a week, are always available to each other. And the families they serve, they are public servants, and they're proud of it. I can't tell you how many times dinners, family events, and even family vacations are interrupted when Lou gets on the phone to talk to someone from the district who needs help. Most recently, when he spent nights at Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, when his dad was in a coma, he would be taking calls from principals, community members, and people who needed help in their own lives. He never led on to where he was or to what he was doing. He just answered their calls and tried to help. He never turns anyone away, and he's been there for all of them. The news of him being unceremoniously dismissed was provided to him. His first reaction was, what about my team? What about my people? What happens to them? His second question was, what about the families we help in this town? As his wife and his friend, I realized many years ago that I had to share him with this community. He has turned down a number of opportunities in the last 10 years to stay here in East Brunswick. This is where he made his home. Our home. This action is pulling him away from his family, his East Brunswick family, from the kids and families he helps in this town, and from our family. We will have to share him with somewhere else, some other town. And that is the shame, because he is willing to finish out his career here in East Brunswick to continue to provide the students in this town all that he could for their success. That will be cut short, and that is unfortunate thing for all of us. Thank you for your time.
This is very difficult for me to do. I'm not a very good public speaker.
I'm so sorry. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Sharon Finiello. And I am a district employee for over 17 years. My position has been dissipated along with my immediate supervisor, Dr. Figaro. Dr. Figaro has made all of us working in student services the best version of ourselves through leadership, compassion, and knowledge in all things education. Our department handled everything from security, parent complaints, security drills, fire drills, special education, state reporting, HIBs, student hearings, affirmative action, clubs, athletics, and that's just to name a few of what goes on in our office. If I named everything that Dr. Figaro oversees and does, we would be here all night. I want him to know, along with Paul Natalecchio, Karen Keegan, Vinita Nargun, Danielle Blaylock, Kevin Zebro, Eric Meyer, Louise Soltana, Adrian Berg, all of the special ed staff, AM Bill, PM Bill, that this has been the best journey of my life. I have learned so much and learned the true meaning of family does not always mean blood. I thank Lou for believing in me and all that I could positively do in this district. While I know that I will move on, since my job has been dissipated, this speech is not about me. It is about the loss of Dr. Figaro. I am confident that this district will be a lot less fortunate without the guidance and leadership of Dr. Louis D. Figaro. There are kids in this district that need him. I don't care about me. I know that you guys did what you needed to do with me, but this is the worst decision that you could possibly make for this district.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Shemelowitz. I'm the president of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, the proud principal of Irwin School, 71 Racetrack Road, and a resident of the East Brunswick community for the past 28 years. East Brunswick has been a very big part of my life for a very long time. My reason for speaking to the board tonight is to remind us of the importance of our entire administrative and instructional team who work together to ensure our students' success. It is a plea to remember the most important people in this discussion, the children of this township. I'm here to advocate for our students and also for the administrative, instructional, and support staff that educate them. Budget cuts are about real people with mortgages and families, many of whom live here in East Brunswick themselves and want to be a part of the process. To reduce teachers, support staff, and administrators to line items, not real-life people committed to the success of the children of this town, is heartbreaking. Eliminating an administrative role that supports the most vulnerable children in East Brunswick, those in danger of not graduating high school, and those who must remain educated while on home instruction, is very troubling. As recent events have shown us, when we work together, we can find other sources to make up for our shortfalls and reverse decisions that would otherwise have had an unacceptable outcome. East Brunswick's principals and supervisors provide invaluable support, leadership, and training for our teachers, counselors, and staff. Our group works collaboratively with every individual in all 11 of our buildings and the administration building and ensures the high level of instruction and responsiveness that our community has come to expect. More than two-thirds of East Brunswick's principals and supervisors are also former members of EBEA. The district has a long history of cultivating administrative talent from its amazing teachers. EBEA's members comprise our spouses, our children, our friends, and our colleagues. We work together every day in our school communities to support this town's children. To pit our two bargaining units against one another online or to take a victory lap at the loss of anyone's job is shameful. We are better than that. This town is better than that. Every position in our unit and organization has purpose and value. East Brunswick's motto has long been excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. That excellence has taken a committed group of administrators, teachers, and support staff. It takes visionary leadership to anticipate what our children will need in the long and short term. Educational leadership and teaching are the hardest but best jobs there are. That commitment to excellence is why we took jobs here. It's why some of us moved here and continue to raise our families here. Every job loss hurts both the individuals affected and the whole organization. As we attempt to navigate this process, our principals and supervisors will continue to show up for our students and staff. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Good evening, folks. I'd like to, first of all, let Ms. Lacks know I'm honored that I'm living rent-free in your head that you decided to take the first five minutes of your presentation tonight to eviscerate me. I'm addressing the board, Jeff Winston, 44 Fresh Pond Road, East Brunswick. Thank you, Mr. Chiahobi. So again, very honored, Ms. Lacks. It's nice to see you do that. I wish you spent as much time worrying about this budget as you do about me. That being said, was just mentioned, the motto of East Brunswick is excellence in academics, athletics, and arts. It's time we add another A, and it's called accountability. You've taken this budget and the presentation, Mr. Julian, I missed the title of it. What was it called? It's Not My Fault? I missed it. And in that presentation, you mentioned a lot of things, a lot of things, a lot of things that happened to you. The victim of what? The state? The victim of the charter schools? You're a victim. Everything happened to you, but what did you do? What have you done to cut costs throughout the years? Yes, Ms. Lacks, you are correct. I did approve many things. Many of the things I approved, as a matter of fact, had to do with Mr. Figaro right there. When COVID hit, I went to Mr. Figaro, and the first thing I said to you was what? It's not the illness of the virus. It's going to be the mental health of our kids. Our kids are going to be in the homes, perhaps in dysfunctional relationships and putting themselves in danger. What did Mr. Figaro say? Let's do whatever we have to do. And you're right, Ms. Lacks. I asked for money. I asked it for that reason. But how dare you vilify me in this meeting? Because what? I write something on Facebook over and over again, and I struck a nerve? I said something that was truthful? I never disclosed anything about closed session, but you just did. To address down a member of the public makes you a disgrace, and it will be taken up with the Ethics Board. You have violated a major policy. That aside, I will say that I call upon this board to pause for a moment, think about what you're doing, and in spite of what Ms. Lacks has convinced you of, you do not have to approve this budget. All of these actions have taken place with a lack of approval. You have been brainwashed to believe that you have to do this. You do not. There is something, and hopefully you've been informed by Mr. Chiahobi, what the results would be if you said no, and there is a remedy around it. Do not do this. That man can't leave. You've chosen the wrong person. Dr. Valeski has been unable to put together any type of succession plan for any position within this district. We lose a principal in the high school, and you have to go out looking? After 10 years, you didn't prepare one individual to take that role? That's a failure in leadership. Thank you. So with that said, I'll leave it at that. I don't appreciate the comments that were made regarding me. It's not my fault. Stop being victimized. Stop the excuses. Be a leader, all of you. Thank you.
Hi. If you can state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Michael Mistruzzo, 27 Colonial Drive, East Brunswick, New Jersey. So my name is Michael Mistruzzo, and I'm here in support of Dr. Lou Figaro. Although I've coached Little League baseball with Lou for a number of years, I'm here to share the impact that Lou has had on our family and our school system. My son Ari instantly had a connection with Lou and looks up to him as a huge role model. When my son transitioned from elementary school to Hughes, Lou has helped not only my son, our baseball team, but many other students with the transition. And it's because of one thing. Lou genuinely cares about the students. Lou has this natural ability to connect with people and make them feel special and bring out the best in themselves. All of the people who are here in support of Lou is a testament to the connections he makes with people. That is important to hear. People, students, kids, that are going to be impacted by this. So aside from loving what he does, Lou is a beacon that shines in both the community and the East Brunswick school system. The programs he oversees work effectively mainly because of who he is as an individual and his passion for the students and his community. Eliminating a position and removing a person like Lou puts this school system at a detriment and in all frankness makes me a little concerned. A father, a parent, a coach of 12-year-old boys for the future of the programs and a lot of the other kids that the programs that this town needs. Now, I get it. I'm a finance guy. You have to balance inflows with outflows. It's simple mathematics. But you don't start cutting at the place that makes the heart of this school system beat, which is Lou Figaro. As a loyal citizen and taxpayer of this town, I urge the board, council, to rethink their decision on the removal of Dr. Lou Figaro and keep him as a part of our school system and our East Brunswick family. Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Chad Seeler, 11 Apache Court, East Brunswick. I have nothing prepared to let the gentleman before me. My wife allowed me to come here this evening. I used to be a member of the board from 2017 to 2019. I chose not to run. Two days ago, I regret that decision based on Dr. Figaro. I had the honor. I don't know, honor? What is it? These people change spots every year on where they sit. They didn't move mine. I sat next to Lou for three years and became friends with Lou. We've had our disagreements, but we've gone out for a beer afterwards. Well, things. When I first came to East Brunswick, I had an issue with co-parenting. I approached a member who was up on here, wanted to name names, who turned his back on me. He didn't want to talk to me. He said he had to do something else to do. Lou Figaro did not do that. Does not do that for anybody in this district. So with that being said, you know, I know things can change. I know you've got tough things to do. I'll be all over the place. Dr. Valeski, you were a gentleman last night in my eyes. You took a beating for no reason. It's your job. The way people have come in here over the years and spoken to Dr. Valeski, and some kids have come in here, it's not right. You've got a job to do. And you have to respect the position if you don't respect the man. Respect the man. It was an honor to work with him for years. Another reason I'm here? My daughter graduated last year. She's in college. Three members of the Board of Education have served for years here. Our second kids have not gone to East Brunswick High School. My son's going to St. Joe's next year, not East Brunswick High School. So let that speak volumes. There's other board members that have, since I've been on the board, whose other children have gone to different high schools, not here after their first one has graduated. That's an issue. So look in the mirror at that. Other than that, that's all I have to say tonight. Lou, you've done a great job. You're a friend of mine. I respect the guys on the board. Again, I regret not being honored to assist with this situation. And one more thing, I'm going to say it again. Going to make a cut. You know what I'm going to say next, Lori? Cut middle school football. There's no reason for it. St. Bart's program is better than it, and it is. I'll pound that till I'm gone here. Thanks, everybody.
Are you a student in the district?
Yes.
Then if you could just state your name, do not give your address, please. Just state your name. You can tell us your grade, but do not state your address, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Matthew Ho. I'm a sophomore at the high school, and I'm a cellist. I'm here to urge you to consider extending the band and orchestra programs in our elementary schools beyond just next year. As a product of our district's elementary school orchestra program, I am tremendously grateful for this wonderful experience. I remember how excited I was when I played my first note on the rental cello I got through school. I remember how proud I was the first time I sat in the fourth grade orchestra playing for one star for families. Since then, music has become one of the most important parts Since then, music has become one of the most important parts of my life. Now, seven years later, I'm a student at the Juilliard Pre College, studying with world-renowned musicians, winning national and international competitions, and I've played in many prestigious venues such as Carnegie Hall and Lincoln Center. I can't imagine what my life would be like if I didn't start playing the cello when I was in fourth grade. My parents wouldn't have started me with private lessons if I hadn't begun with the school orchestra first and demonstrated my passion. The elementary school orchestra experience has fundamentally shaped who I am today. It was in the humble settings of Warren Starver's music room where I learned more than just notes and rhythms. I learned discipline, collaboration, and the joy of expressing myself through music. It broke my heart when I heard that the instrumental music programs would be discontinued in all our lower elementary schools. So I thank you, Board of Education, now that you've decided to bring it back for next year. I really hope that we can find a solution to continuously keep the program and that students and families don't have to worry that it will soon be discontinued in the future. You may say that students can start band and orchestra when they're in fifth grade in Hammerhill, but at this age, one year of instruction and practice is critical and can make a big difference. Personally, I don't think I would be able to achieve all that I've achieved today if I started orchestra just one year later. East Brunswick has a long tradition of excelling in music education. Our high school orchestra and band are among the best in the state. These all rely on an excellent music program starting at a young age, so let's try our best not to lose this tradition. I understand that we have a shortfall in our budget. However, let's not measure the worth of our orchestra program simply in terms of budget sheets and expense reports, but in the countless stories like mine. Let us find creative solutions that will allow these programs not only to survive, but to thrive. As a person who greatly benefited from our elementary school orchestra program, I'm willing to contribute my time and effort to help raise funds that we need. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and thank you to all our board members for your continued dedication to our education.
Matthew, 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 before you go, are you 16 years old?
How old are you? I'm 15.
15 years old. Very well spoken. Unbelievable.
Aram Shakir, 8 Lantern Lane, East Brunswick. Before I start my little talk here, I wish better accommodations were made. I was standing outside for two hours in four-inch heels because I came back from work, and I haven't had dinner. So I know that you guys have notices that need to be sent out, but when you know there's a hot topic in the town and a lot of people are going to show up for support, please have proper accommodations. You know, we have a lot of venues in town. Anyways, I'd like to first start by thanking you for your, the Board, for your countless hours and dedication towards our district and children. Your roles are difficult, challenging, and underappreciated, and I salute you for taking these roles on for the betterment of our schools. With that being said, we understand that budget cuts are inevitable. However, cutting roles that are critical for our children and schools is unwise and a detriment to our children, to all our children. To be clear, we're talking about cutting a role that oversees security, counseling, athletics, and most importantly, special education. Delegating these roles to others or hiring on a stipend on contract basis is extremely risky, reckless, and foolish. Things will flip through the cracks and create a multitude of problems and difficulties, especially for kids that need the extra care. We already have someone that's not only handling so many critical roles at once, but handling it beautifully. A lot of you on the Board have been around for years and are well aware that Dr. Lou is an amazing human. The fact that so many people have been advocating for him speaks volumes towards his professionalism and empathetic nature. It's a true testament to his character. I chair East Brunswick Human Relation Council, and Dr. Lou also serves on the same council. He wholeheartedly gives himself to the community, not only during business hours, but during his personal time too, taking time away from his family for the betterment of our community. I don't know what the answers are. I don't sit on the Board. You all do. Frankly, I don't have the insight or the full picture, but I'm sure the Board can come up with innovative ideas and solutions to deal with these budget cuts. Maybe forming an advisory committee of professionals that excel in finance that can provide valuable insight. Or maybe reduce the number of programs and softwares the kids use and have, a general program across the Board. We have way too many licenses from Canvas, OneNote Teams, Zoom, Google Docs, and I'm sure a plethora of apps and softwares that I'm not aware of. Maybe have a uniformity across the Board so that there's less software or programs. Maybe work with the township to get more funds allocated than 67% that we receive. I'm not sure. The cuts are inevitable, but I implore you to not cut Dr. Lou's role as he serves an extremely critical and essential role and simply put is amazing at his role. Again, I urge you to look for other ways to deal with these cuts. He's invested in all our children and our schools. Thank you.
Can you say something about why we're here? Hi, I'm Gavin Salgado. I am a student at Churchill Junior High School, and I wanted to come talk today about the removal of the fourth-grade instrumental program. Music's been such a big part of my life, and I don't know what I'd do without it. I have been playing percussion for most of my life, drums, mallets, xylo, you name it, whatever. I've played it all. And it's become one of my coping mechanisms and ways of relieving stress, and it's, you know, when people aren't there, my drumsticks always were. And I started really, and I took off, and I traveled around the country, and I've performed in so many different venues due to my opportunities with music, and I never would have continued if it weren't for the opportunities that I had when I was in fifth grade in the K-5 schools, which are now K-4. And to see those programs go, when there's another kid who comes through and they need that same opportunity, they don't have anyone there, they need something to rely on, and like how I had my music, I had my drumsticks. There needs to be something for that kid, and to remove that program, they're losing that. And when I hear that that program's getting removed, that's, I couldn't take it. Like, I'm shaking while I'm up here. It really hurt me. So please bring back the fourth-grade program. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Sudell. I'm not a resident of East Brunswick anymore. I do live at 418 Melrose Way, Keyport. However, I'm an East Brunswick high school alum of 2010. I'm a data migration analyst by day for a software company, but I am a touring musician by night. So music means a lot to me, and I would not be here without the East Brunswick music program, and I owe a lot to this program. We all started somewhere. So when you don't sow the seeds of a foundation for a program, everything else will suffer. You see how well the band programs are going at Churchill, at Hammerhill, at the high school. Anything less than that, you will see that domino effect, and you do not get to, you don't get to call yourself excellent in the arts without having the full foundation there. Supportive arts programs start at the top. That's the way it's always been. And offering elementary instrumental is an equitable choice for everybody in this diverse district. As you all know, East Brunswick is a melting pot economically, culturally. Parents can't always afford those private lessons and that one-on-one instruction time like fourth and fifth graders have been getting and like fourth graders should continue to get. And on top of that, too, transitioning to a new school, on top of having to pick an instrumental, an instrument that they've never played before, not a wise choice. During COVID, at the height of COVID, the arts were treasured. You know, you saw all these celebrities, all these musicians who were collaborating together, and everyone was just in awe of it. Treating it like it's disposable starts in schools, and we can't allow that. That is not model behavior for school districts. This also sends such a broad message to other neighboring districts. I have friends that I have met through the music industry and through playing in touring bands who actually teach nearby in other districts. They are feeling the pressure of this potential decision. So sending that message from a district that is so nationally recognized, it is right behind you, sending that message is going far and wide. So I implore you to find a way. There is another way to make it happen. And on top of that, I don't know Dr. Lou, however, everybody here, I mean, that's a testament to his character. And when times get tough, you find the helpers. It is evident that our elementary school music teachers, all the staff in the schools, and Dr. Lou are all the helpers. So I implore you to make it happen, make it work, figure it out. If not for being a musician, I would not have been able to figure it out, and that might be my biggest lesson that I've learned in years of being a musician. Thank you.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Raquel Harrison. I'm from Churchill Junior High School.
Oh, you're a student.
I'm sorry. Could you say your name again, please?
Raquel Harrison.
Thank you.
And she's from Churchill.
Yeah.
Thank you, Raquel.
I just want to say a few things. Dr. Figueroa, you've been here for everybody, and I've known you for as long as I can remember, since I was in pre-K. And it just breaks our heart just to let you go. We don't want to, and, you know. You have supported and loved everybody's decisions. You've been here for everybody, and you supported them. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you do. You're not only an employee, but you are a citizen and a leader to our community. We just want to say thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Nichols. I live at 6017 Ravens Crest Drive in Plainsboro. I've had the privilege of teaching band in East Brunswick since 2012, and I need to remind everyone here that if you rip out the roots of this community, you will watch the tree die. In 2012, in the throes of the recession, most school districts cut their arts and music programs down to the legal minimum. In stark contrast, East Brunswick was adding a position to its music education faculty. It was a strong indication that EB was a district that valued and prioritized arts education. At last night's budget hearing, we learned that EB plans to eliminate fourth-grade band and orchestra programs after one more year. We are grateful that the program has been retained for now, but this is not enough. This year's 70% enrollment rate is typical, and it is a testament to the value our community places on instrumental music. The Department demonstrates year after year that the cost of four teachers' salaries is worth running a program that benefits a great majority of our students. It is not an efficiency cut. Most of our fourth graders rent their own instruments, while the school maintains a small inventory for students who cannot afford one. Remember the $572,000 allocated toward therapeutic counseling services this year, and watch that number skyrocket if we eliminate programs and people that promote our students' well-being. This month, the Hammerhill Band celebrated extremely well-received concerts at the Second Annual Night of Percussion and the 15th Annual Night of Jazz. The opportunities and the level of progress our program affords these students is astonishing. Displaying excellence in the arts on the front page of the school website rings hollow when administrative actions perennially threaten to decimate a successful program that has taken decades to grow from the ground up. Make no mistake, next year, delaying the start of band and orchestra by a full year is not an increase in instructional time. The band program began in fourth grade prior to 2020, and we can attribute the tremendous amount of recent growth in our jazz, percussion, and concert band programs to the decision to start them earlier. The success of our instrumental programs is a direct result of a strong technical foundation and expert instruction our students receive at the fourth-grade level. Learning to play an instrument builds character, fosters perseverance, critical thinking, and physical dexterity. Playing music with others promotes teamwork and social skills, and that experience cannot be replicated by oneself at home, with a book, or through a screen. Most importantly, our students' collective mental health has been in crisis for the past five years or more, and removing a program that does so much to bring them joy and teach them these skills is unconscionable. Students aspire to play an instrument because it's woven into their school culture. They see the rewards that practice and dedication bring every time they watch a fourth-grade concert assembly. They see those instrument cases going home on the bus and imagine themselves carrying their own trumpet or cello someday. They hear the sounds of the band and orchestra ringing through the halls. They witness it as a worthy, joyful pursuit firsthand. We cannot allow this crucial component of our district's culture to disappear. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening. I'm one of the family here in East Brunswick. I here since like 14 years ago.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. If you could just give us your name and address for the record.
No problem. My name is Raquel Richard.
Thank you, Raquel.
I live in East Brunswick since like 14 years ago. When I came here in East Brunswick, my big one, she was like in fourth grade. Now she's in dentist school, and I have the second one, he's engineering, engineering school. And the little one also, she's in ninth grade, and the other one, because I have four kids, he's in 10th grade. I won't say something, I'm not good in speech, but I'm gonna try. I'm gonna just say, Dr. Figueroa, he always helped whatever he asked. Dr. Figueroa, I think this is the right place he to be here. Wherever he need him, he found him. And when I came in East Brunswick here, because of him, I didn't move, because he bring me here, and he know what's going on, and he solves the problem. That's why I want to thank you so much to make me stay here in East Brunswick because of you, and I want to thank you so much because you take care of our kids here in East Brunswick. Please, we need you here. Thank you so much, everyone. They gave us opportunity to talk, and I'm so sorry for take your time, and good luck. We all love you, Dr. Figueroa. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Taylor. I live at 86 Appleby Avenue in South River, New Jersey. I'm not a resident, but I am a former substitute teacher.
Your last name, please.
Fenello.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm a former substitute teacher for the ESL and ESY summer programs. My mom is also Sharon Fenello, who just spoke so passionately about Dr. Figueroa just a few minutes ago. I was blessed to be given career guidance by Dr. Figueroa and to have known him for over a decade, and I'm very grateful my mother had someone so amazing to work under. I think that the clapping while he walked in spoke volumes about how much of an outstanding leader Dr. Figueroa is. I believe the question on everyone's mind is, how did you come to a decision to cut one administrator over another? Was this a board vote? I do not see how this district benefits from losing the administrator who is the most invested in this town. He's at the majority of district sporting events, supporting all the district sports teams. He is a local coach in town for sports. I can honestly say, in speaking to a lot of people in town the past few days, people tell me he's the only central office administrator that they see at events in town. He runs the secondary principal meetings. He runs safety committee meetings. He's chairperson of student services committee meetings. He runs EB HRC meetings. He, along with Paul Natalecchio, fought to put the safety of the students first and foremost in a world that is a complete mess. He's also the district anti-bullying coordinator in a district this size that is a huge undertaking and a full-time job of its own. He truly cares about diversity, equity, and overall success for all students, and he has saved many students' lives, as you all just heard, by many students. This decision to cut Dr. Figueroa actually hurts the students and parents of this town. This doesn't seem like the least impactful decision for students, which was mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. He lives in this town, and he's actually present for the kids in the community. He is the fabric of East Brunswick. I do not believe that anyone else here can say the same. To Dr. Figueroa, this is not just a job. The decision of which administrator to cut should not be made by the Board. It should be voted on by the parents of the district. I believe that it would be a unanimous decision to keep the man who exemplifies what an administrator should be, Dr. Figueroa. So I say to the Board, if you truly care about the students and what best benefits the community, you will reconsider which administrator is cut for the 2024 to 2025 school year. And to Dr. Figueroa, do not let this Board break your spirit. When Dr. Valeski spoke about the recent rankings rankings of our district, you and your staff can honestly take credit because your dedication is a huge part of why East Brunswick is the top district in your state. Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, how are you? Eric Varga, 37 Clearview Road. I came here in support of Dr. Figueroa, and I wasn't going to speak, but I feel compelled to after seeing, you guys have a line out the door right now, so get here, be prepared for a long night. What I really want to say is, everyone on this Board right now is tasked with a responsibility, and that is a responsibility to represent the people of East Brunswick and what's best for our children. Think about that for a minute. The decision you're going to make right now is going to be about the two hottest topics in every school district across the nation, student services and school safety. And you're about to make a decision on a man who has his own horses in the race with his own children in this school district. Think about that for a moment. An administrator who has children in this district that supervises school safety and student services, and you're tasked with that responsibility to represent the people of East Brunswick who don't want it to happen. of East Brunswick who don't want it to happen. Thank you.
State your name and address.
My name is Chris Finnegan, and I live at 32 Stevens Drive in East Brunswick. The first time I ever set foot in an East Brunswick school was in 1996, when I came here for a high school region orchestra rehearsal. Later, while in college and graduate school at Rutgers, I had classes taught by Gordon Tadashi, then the orchestra director at East Brunswick High School. Time and again, East Brunswick showed itself to be a model of what an orchestra program could be. I have been an orchestra director for 20 years and have been proud to serve the people of East Brunswick for the past 14 of them. I have taught at Central, Frost, and Irwin Elementary Schools, Churchill Junior High School, East Brunswick High School, and Hammershold, both as a middle school and an upper elementary school. I am proud of what my colleagues and I have accomplished with the support of this board, administrators who support music education, and the wonderful families and children of East Brunswick. I don't need to tell many of you, you've seen it with your own eyes as we have taught your children. I moved my family here two years ago so that my children could grow and flourish in this vibrant arts community and receive a high-quality education that included one of the best instrumental music programs in the state. I believe in the potential of our town, our schools, our staff, our students, and our families. It is why I chose to work here, and it is why I chose to raise my family here. I do not want my second-grade son to be part of the first, fourth-grade class in at least 40 years to be denied access to the wonderful instrumental music program that we have. During the first week of school, I always teach my students an Irish phrase, "Tus mai l'anne hibre." It means a good start is half the work. For the 398 fourth graders, 70% of the grade currently enrolled in this program, that is exactly what they are getting. Just take a listen to one of our concerts to see what our students can achieve. I thank the board for restoring the fourth-grade instrumental music program and the four teachers who make it a success, but this is only a good start. The community has clearly spoken and shown that this is a valued priority that must be sustained. Why remove a vital year of learning and ruin a program that means so much to so many of our children and families, has brought countless accolades for decades, and puts East Brunswick in the forefront of music education? We know that you face many difficult decisions, but know that you are not alone. We have a great staff of educators in the instrumental music department, 16 people with 23 degrees and over 204 years of teaching experience between them. Many of us have spoken over the past two nights to try and share our experience so that better decisions can be made. We have a vibrant community that supports, values, and loves the arts. We want to help. It is my hope that going forward, this board and administration will avail themselves of the expertise of the staff that they have hired and listen to the will of the community before making such important and far-reaching decisions. I again thank the board for the restoration of the fourth-grade instrumental music program. My heart goes out to all the people in this district whose jobs have been reduced or eliminated, and I hope that we can all work together going forward so that we do not find ourselves in this same place next year. Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Michelle Moore. I am the Irwin School General Vocal Music Teacher, and I'd just like to say what an incredible, inspiring night it has been to see the flow of support coming toward you, Dr. Figueroa. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Ed for extending the life of the band and orchestra program for the next year. The outpouring of support for our program has been invaluable, and we thank the community for that. Our hope is that this is not just a short-term solution and an act of good faith that expires in one year. Our instrumental enrollment was strong in fourth grade across the district. We have heard it many times, 70%, and the projections for next year look equally as good. We feel the need to address and clarify the myth that pullout lessons put students at some kind of academic disadvantage. That argument is simply inaccurate and outdated. I could provide decades of scientific evidence regarding playing instruments at an early age and what it does for the brain, creativity, building social, emotional well-being, but the community of East Brunswick already knows these things. During the pandemic, parents, teachers, and administrators knew how important it was to get our schools back to normal. Hearing, performing, and celebrating live music as a community was essential to our normalcy and our well-being. Coming back to school, we struggled to get our numbers back up, and finally, after seeing some improvements in healthier numbers, now we fear about the foundation of our program, what happens after next year. East Brunswick High School is recognized as a New Jersey Model School for the Arts. We want to maintain this recognition, which is only possible because of the foundation developed in the lower elementary schools and every developmental stage after that into high school. Every year, my chorus numbers, my enrollment goes up, from the winter concert to the spring concert. Why? Students are inspired and influenced by their classmates' performances. We want a long-term plan to keep instrumental music in K-4 buildings, to keep that vision and influence in our elementary schools for years to come. The morale of teachers and staff in our school district is really at an all-time low. We want transparency. We want to be heard. Last night, Dr. Valeski, I heard you speak, that we cannot do this alone.
Ten seconds.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. We're often told we are experts in our field, and I agree we need to work together. We would love a seat at the table. Thank you.
Rose Cruz, 22 Perry Road. I have two boys at Lawrence Brook. I'm also the secretary for the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Today, my six-year-old asked if he could come to work with my husband or me today, and I told him I didn't have any projects to work on, but the truth is that we were both cut loose from our fully remote tech jobs recently. I was actually laid off on April Fool's Day, and we're broke as a joke. The special ed and student services departments interact with students and their parents of all different socioeconomic statuses and abilities. We, as parents of students with special needs, can be a handful. We typically have some issues of our own, and we don't often fit the mold of what you might consider an ideal cooperative parent. We're not always thinking logically, and it gets ugly. I've seen you guys get your share of cringe-worthy tongue lashings from this podium, but what experience does anyone else have with leading HIV investigations, threat assessments, dealing with Child Protective Services, and handling mental health crises? The more I learn about the complex codes and laws, I feel like I understand them even less. The knowledge and experience is acquired over time, and it cannot just be installed like in The Matrix yet. The collective wisdom in this organization is priceless, and you're putting it all at risk. Missing bedtime moments really hurts because it's my favorite part of the day, but I feel compelled to show up for PTA, CPAG, and Board of Ed functions. I do this by choice because I know what makes this district excellent is not the curriculum or the dilapidated buildings, it's the people. Kids do well when their basic needs are met. They feel safe, they're fed and loved. We have all that and more, and that's why I've never been happier. My kids are thriving, but I'm not content knowing that my kids are doing well when so many people around us are struggling, and neither is Dr. Figueroa, which is why everyone who reports up to Lou already goes above and beyond every day to help the most vulnerable citizens. They bend over backwards and jump through rings of fire before most people pour their first cup of coffee. Promoting family engagement is a priority for CPAG because it's the number-one indicator of student success. The way I explain my absence to my family is, the grownups have to get together with each other to help each other, figure out what's working and what we need to fix. And I'm new at this, so I need to put in a lot of practice, and they see me helping out the other veteran parents in the neighborhood, and they know that I go to meetings. Humans make errors and poor decisions, especially when we're dysregulated, tired, and stressed. It's part of life.
Ten seconds.
Hiding our mistakes and not asking for help makes matters much worse. I understand this budget might look good to someone on paper, but out here, it feels like you're taking away parts of the engine without really demonstrating and understanding how it's going to impact us down the road. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and East Brunswick administrators. My name is Mary O'Mara, and I am an orchestra teacher at Churchill Junior High School. This is my 21st year as a New Jersey public school teacher. I also grew up in this town. I was fortunate to begin playing viola in fourth grade at Irwin Elementary School in 1989. I consider myself lucky that I am now entrusted with carrying on the legacy of the orchestra program in East Brunswick. My former teachers, Darlene Brant, Anna Braun, Michael Berry, and Gordon Tadashi, all built an incredible orchestra program during their tenure here, and I believe that many of you heard from them this last week, as to why we must begin instruction in grade four. I was very relieved to hear the news that the fourth-grade program will be in place for the next school year. I would like you to consider the following when moving ahead with budgetary issues. The last four years have brought about tremendous change, and I think this also relates to everybody speaking about Dr. Luffy Giroa tonight. Speak to any teacher who has taught before and after the pandemic. Our students have changed, and the job is more challenging. I feel very strongly we are asking our children to grow up too quickly. They are exposed to so much so early. As a parent and a teacher, I want our kids to be nurtured in a rich and supportive cultural environment for as long as possible. Providing opportunities such as instrumental music in the lower elementary schools fosters such ideals. It lays the groundwork and enriches the entire school by showing what's possible through hard work and tenacity. It creates joy not only for the performers but for the younger students attending concerts, aspiring to play their own instrument when they reach fourth grade. These types of experience cannot be replicated, and we don't want potential to go untapped. And we certainly don't want to let students not find out about their talents, their passions, and we want them to build confidence, and that needs to continue throughout their development but start early as possible. As a member of my own town's Board of Education, I understand how challenging your role can be. I understand that it's a lot to hear all of these comments. It's a lot. It's hard to not personalize it, but I ask you to really just take the community's consideration very seriously. I want you to be mindful of the values of this community you serve and know that my team, that I'm very proud to be a part of, the East Brunswick Instrumental Music Team works every single day passionately for the students of this town. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Franquino. I teach orchestra also at Churchill Junior High School, and I can honestly say I love my job. This is one of the finest districts to work in, and I'm so proud to be on the staff here. I'd like to thank the board and administration for making the best decision for our students last night and to restore the fourth-grade instrumental music program for next school year. I've had the privilege of working in this incredible district since 2012. During my first seven years, I taught fourth and fifth-grade orchestra, and I'd like to make a few brief points tonight focusing on access and equity, student mental health, and our district's musical culture. First, a fourth-grade instrumental music program offered during the school day is one of the greatest assets students, families have in our public schools. In the world of music, access to instruments and quality instruction at an early age is critical to a student's success and abilities as they get older. In the absence of school instruction during school hours, the only means for obtaining meaningful instruction is to pay a private teacher, and this costs anywhere from $70 to $100, possibly more, depending on the instrument. While some students can afford this, many cannot. What most families can afford is the comparatively reasonable cost of renting an instrument in fourth grade in a low-pressure setting, and yes, in East Brunswick, it's the parents, not the district, that pay for instruments and repair. This in itself is resounding proof that this community values a strong music education in the early grades. Families move to East Brunswick for access to high-quality programs like ours, and it's our job to keep them in place for all students. Second, I don't need to tell anyone in this room how important our students' mental health is. There are many people, myself included, who believe that excessive screen time and the general lack of productive diversions are having an observably detrimental impact on the collective mental health of students. Picture this: A student learning to play the cello in fourth grade is excited. They get to take it home. It's new. Everything feels new. It has that new smell. These instruments are one of the best tools to divert students away from screens and towards productive skills that, for many, will bring them lifelong enjoyment and meaning. I can't tell you how many times my students have told me about playdates where they've practiced their orchestra music together over FaceTime, and it even happens in the upper grades at Churchill. Participation in ensembles builds relationship collaboration in real time and is simply one of the best ways to regulate emotion. Our students need this in fourth grade, when the brain is going through an exorbitant amount of growth and development. Instrumental music is a huge and powerful part of this district's identity. This is not an empty platitude. It's an undeniable reality. 70% of our students in fourth grade. Thank you very much.
Jack Levitt, 4 Springfield Road. And like Mr. Pan, Dr. Pan, I am going to be transparent and say that I am also putting an application to be a board member a couple of weeks ago and interviewed. I actually didn't intend to speak tonight, but I was very inspired by what I heard from everybody in the audience. By and large, they're very supportive, well-researched, and definitely passionate, especially toward Dr. Figueroa, who I have a special place in my heart for because he danced for the Education Foundation and killed it, but that's beside the point. All the people here want the schools to win. They want us to succeed and not lose valuable assets. And we're fortunate to have people in town who care so much that they're willing to line up outside for a couple of hours and show their support. So many towns have people who are apathetic and wouldn't even give up their Thursday night TV to advocate for what they believe in. It's a blessing and a challenge for the board. You get all this guidance from the community, but you can't grant every request. I do know that all of you care about doing what's best for our kids, but it does take a village. I appreciate that the legislator info was shared during the presentation. It's going to be available on the website. We have a strong and proud community, and I urge all of us, and that includes me, I commit to use my voice and make it heard very loudly, but show our strength in numbers and use our volume to help the board and administration get the attention and hopefully correct the faulty funding issues so we get the right funding and keep the programs we deserve to have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. Rarely am I at a loss for words, but tonight I am. It has been a really dark month for our community, right? Nobody ever wants to lose jobs. Nobody wants to lose programs. Nobody wants to have cuts, but we're faced with a situation. And I'm always a try-to-look-at-something-with-the-glass-half-full kind of person, and one thing I have to say is this community has come together, and that is amazing. We've collectively come together so that each of us could express our concerns in our words that you can hear, and you can try your best to do what you can to move education forward because we know people come here to East Brunswick for our schools, for our public schools. So I think we have to look at this and branch out and do all we can collectively as a group to ensure that the right people are employed in our district, that we're not losing jobs, that we're not losing programs, and it's going to be a collective project that's going to go on for many months and many years, I believe. So as we move forward, I really just want to ask for stakeholder involvement going forward. Maybe if we would start some of these conversations earlier, there might be more solutions because collectively as a whole, we're a pretty smart community, and maybe we could come up with something, even if it would just save a little, right? We have so many lives at stake right now, and it's heartbreaking, right? And I know you feel the same, and I know you feel the same. It's heartbreaking to have so many people impacted in such a negative way. So I think my point is, we need to have a better vision going forward on what we're going to do and how we're going to handle this and come together collectively as a group. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Doreen Sislak, Eight Birch Hill Road. Before I begin, I just want to say Lou, you know my family adores you. I have three kids in three different schools, and you have gone above and beyond in their sports and in school. My youngest son even wanted to take Lou trick-or-treating on his moped and put him in the sidecar. So you are our family. Dr. Figueroa works collectively with one special education director and several supervisors. Together, they work to address legal, ethical, and procedural issues that require expertise, training, and confidence. Dr. Figueroa has administrative experience as a principal at the elementary and secondary levels. Before coming here 13 years ago, he implements his personal and academic expertise daily. Dr. Figueroa is the only trained administrator as the school safety specialist, which is required by code. He is the anti-boling coordinator. This role is crucial in fostering an atmosphere of respect, inclusion in our schools. By effectively addressing bullying incidents, he has contributed to the creation of a safe, secure environment where our students can learn without fear of harassment or intimidation. And I have had to do two HIB reports for my own children, and he has been supportive a hundred percent. Dr. Figueroa, along with the supervisor of student services, trained the other county districts on how to effectively implement HIBs. This cannot be trusted in somebody unreliable. I can tell you the detriment it has placed on my children without his support. He is also one of two affirmative action officers in the district. For those of you who are unaware of this position, it includes the professional responsibility of ensuring compliance with laws and regulations regarding fair employment practices, which as an educator myself, I can tell you are not always compliant. He works with various departments, including HR and the EEOC, to conduct investigations, train staff, and develop reports. This is often entails additional work hours for which he has never asked for overtime or stipend to be in place. Dr. Figueroa works cohesively with the police department and the prosecutor's office to ensure that our Director of School Security, School Safety Coordinator, and Security Officers receive proper training and resources to guarantee a safe learning environment for students and staff. Dr. Figueroa resides in town, as many of you know, and he's responded to emergencies and has protected our school students and staff 24/7, and I know this for a fact. He additionally physically attends work five days a week. I don't think he's really ever out. And who do we call or text or email 24/7? There is nobody else that is closer. His relationship goes beyond our administrative responsibilities. He is our town. Dr. Valeski, I appreciate all that you have done over the past 10 years, but Lou, you have been our strength, our security, and our guide through this, and our true leader.
My name is Mia Figueroa, and for those who don't know me, I'm Dr. Lou Figueroa's daughter. I'm incredibly blessed to have him as my dad. He's an unbelievable dad to me and my brother and the countless number of other kids in this town who don't have dads or who need someone to fight for them. He is the most selfless person I know. He always puts everyone else before himself. He is also the strongest person I know. He always stands strong even when it's hard. When we found out three weeks ago that my grandpa was in a coma and he eventually passed away, my dad stayed strong and was there for me and my brother while we cried and just kept comforting us even though he was the one who needed to be comforted. I lost my grandpa, but he lost his dad, and I can't imagine what he was going through because I can't imagine living without him. He is the best dad in the world. He taught both me and my brother to always stand up for what is right even when it is not easy. He has been a great role model for us and for many of the children he has helped in this district. My dad never does anything for himself and is always doing things for others. This is just the type of person he is. He is the smartest, kindest, most helpful person I know, and I would be nowhere without him. My dad has done so many things for this town across the 13 years that he has been working here. He has been an incredible assistant superintendent of student activities and services, an amazing coach for rec, an assistant coach for travel baseball here in East Brunswick, and still is, and a rec basketball coach for hundreds of kids over the years. He even coached both me and my brother's teams to championships with Fast Break this year. My dad is so much more than his job here in East Brunswick. He also cares about the culture and the community as a resident of East Brunswick. He is a proud member of the East Brunswick Human Relations Council, a friend to many, and has touched tremendously, touched and tremendously helped and impacted so many people in East Brunswick. So many people have told me that it would be heartbreaking if he is let go, and I agree. He has done so much for East Brunswick, for the schools, and tries to help everyone he meets in this town. My dad always fights for what is right and for those who can't fight for themselves. He will always support the people who don't have anyone else to support them. He defended special education rights in students, working to make sure that they have the resources they deserve in all schools. He is a supporter of athletics and clubs for students at every level. It hurts to know that my dad is being let go for defending these things because he loves and cares for them and the people so much, and I know they love him and appreciate him for everything he does and will continue to do. Recently, there was a fire drill at Churchill. My dad tries to be at as many security drills in this district that he can. On that day, I saw him and ran up to my dad and hugged him, but so did a group of special education students who were walking by on the grass and insisted that they give him a hug. That is the kind of impact that my dad has had on everyone's life and the type of person he is. I'm speaking today not just as his daughter, but also as a student at Churchill Junior High School, and I'm so grateful for everything he's done. Dad, you are my hero, and I love you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Sure. If you could give your name and address, please.
Mark Fornello. I live in South River, but I am a part-time ASK employee. And in October, my wife said to me, ASK is looking for people, and I did it 10 years ago. And let me tell you, it was the most satisfying job. You know, the kids love you. Can you come to the graduation? The whole nine yards. I do it Thursdays and Fridays. Kids come to me and say, Mr. Mark, how come you don't come Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday? I say, well, I got another job, and it's very hard for me. When I get there, like this afternoon, I can hear the kids in the hall, Mr. Mark is here, Mr. Mark is here. What a feeling. Because it's not for the money, because we know that it's not a great paying job, but on that small scale of what I do, what Lou Figueroa does on such a greater scale, I come home and say, you know what? I'm tired. I have a full-time job. I don't want to do this anymore. But then I think about Kit Kat and this one. What enough to, hey, Mr. Mark? And I say, you know, I got to go next Thursday and Friday. These kids rely on people like us. Lou, on such a big level, 12 schools, student services, how you could let this man go is beyond me. Thank you for your time.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Vanita Nargund, and I live at 12 Coldstream Court, Skilman, New Jersey. I am an employee here since last 17 years. I had no plans of talking today. It's 10:15. I am scared to drive in the nighttime. One part of my brain was saying that, do you want to leave now? It's only 10:15. And the other part of my brain is saying, no, no, you can't. You have to speak. So I just, I won't take too much time. 13 years ago, when our department, me and Karen Keegan, both got new jobs, and then office was empty, we were waiting for the assistant superintendent to join. We didn't know who this man was. We knew he's a male. We didn't know who he was. We tried to look up for him, and, but we were scared. We didn't know, you know, what kind of man he would be, and it was scary part. So me and Karen used to talk about each other like, oh, let's see, maybe he will come today. Maybe he'll come tomorrow. And the day came, and he came. And the first day, he called us in, and he said, I'm Lou Figueroa. I will be working here as. And I'll tell you honestly, the first day, he made us so comfortable, so comfortable. He said, you're not working for me. We are working together. We are going to be working together in this department and make this department the best department there is. And he said, any phone call comes to my office, everybody has to be, everybody has to receive the phone call with respect. And I'll tell you, every phone call we receive in this department, we love to hear people's, the way they talk about Lou. And we have solved so many problems by just getting training under Lou. So many times, we just speak to the parents, and then parents are happy. And then I have seen so many times, parents come to our office with anger, so much anger in them, but then it's, oh, my God, it's going to be a difficult day now. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But then they go inside Lou's office, and then comes out smiling, shaking hands. I don't know what happens in that office, but they just come happy. Happy, happy ever. So I, he has a magic. He really has a magic with people. And I have one more instance I wanted to say. There was one Indian kid, Indian bag kid who got an award, and so he had to present that award. And then the kid's name was a little difficult, as usual, a lot of names are difficult. So, and he said, Vanita, can I ask you a favor? And I said, okay. Can you please help me pronounce this name? And then he practiced how to say the name correctly. He took that much interest in just saying the name of a student correct on the stage because he was getting a bigger word. That's the kind of man Lou is. And I'm telling you, the best 13 years of my life, and I have never cried this much after I lost my mom and dad. This is the third time we are constantly crying because we don't want to lose him. Please do something. Thank you so much.
My name is Ashley Rose. I am a student assistant specialist in the district. I work under Lou. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I wanted to just be here to support Lou. But I was hired in the district 11 years ago. Lou, you were in on my first interview. And I saw Lou a couple of days ago, and I wanted to say to him when I saw him, but I wanted to share as a direct staff member in his department. He was my first observation. I was fresh out of grad school, and the assistant superintendent came to observe me, first time ever, and I was scared. And he gave me a piece of advice that changed the way that I counsel students. And he gave me the opportunity to go shadow a student assistant specialist that was in the district far longer than I was, and I spent the day with her, and I learned a lot from her. And I wouldn't have had that opportunity if someone like Lou didn't come to watch me. And I know that I've had amazing relationships with students in my time here as a student assistant specialist. And I think the reason why I've had the relationships that I've had with students is because of the advice that he gave me within a couple of months of being hired by this district. And I've worked for many years in this district, and I am proud to be a member of the Student Services Department. I'm proud to work for people like Lou. I'm proud to work for people like Danielle Blaylock, and I am proud to work for this district because of the work that we do in mental health for our students. And I just wanted to thank you for the work that you've done for the mental health of our students. Thank you.
If you could just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Pamela Lung, Nine Parsons Road. First off, I know this is difficult. I know you in every, in all your seats, you have difficult decisions to make, difficult choices to do. Totally get it. Thank you. It's not easy. I get it. And you don't, I know you've been, had a lot of backlash. Totally get it. But where do we go from here? Your presentation shows a deficit of $7.8 million this year, and that's based off of what you're stating, uncontrollable expenses and a formula-based funding that we knew about was coming, and it just implemented it this year. It's $7.8 million. And your only recourse, well, your first recourse is to eliminate vital positions, teachers, an important position right in front. I don't know you, I just moved here, but what I can see from the outcry of your community and your students, he's important. You're getting it wrong. You need to revisit your budgets. Do something. You have $7.88 million in deficit now. What about next year? That formula is going to be here. What about the year after? What are you going to do? You're going to continue to cut teachers? You're, you're providing our students with, you're not setting up our students for success. You're providing them less support, less everything. You're setting them up for failure. You're setting our town up for failure. The outcry that you've heard tonight, you need to take that back, and you need to do, you need to do better. I know this is hard. I know it, but you need to do better. You have a town behind you. I mean, we are, you know, everybody's really looking into how we can help our children. You really need to, this is not going to work. And I understand you want to put it on us, but you need to play your part, too. This is not, this is just not going to work. And I just really ask that you revisit that budget, revisit your decisions on what you're going to do, eliminating positions, teachers' positions, Mr. Dr. Figueroa here as well. Please revisit that, and I mean, thank you again for all the hard work that you do. And I hope it, you know, works out for the best.
Ten seconds.
Hi. My name is Karen Keegan, Four Yell Court, East Brunswick, New Jersey. I just wanted to reiterate what our team has said today about Lou. I've worked with Lou. He has made me and all of our team as strong as we are and better people today, and we love you. We love you for that, yeah. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, then I am going to close the presentation on the budget, and this actually brings us to the go-to-the cause for the public in case anyone has anything left to say. You are welcome to speak on anything. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to prevent the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board should provide a period of public comment at every meeting of the board. You'll be limited to three minutes duration. I always remind people, this is your time to speak to the board. Please don't mistake silence as not caring about issues. We do provide follow-up if your name and address, and I don't see them because it's a very full house, or left with Karen or Janet in the back or in the middle. So that being said, is there anyone who would like to speak to the board this evening? Sure. Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Sizmar, Under Fresh Ponds Road. I'm going to be brief. You know, when I sat there, I was long-winded. I'm going to be brief. Do you think they should change their minds and keep Lou and do whatever it takes? You know? When your children spoke, when your wife spoke, when everybody here spoke, man. And I know it's tough. Like I said, I told you guys right from the beginning, my first words were, thank you. And I'm going to say, and I know everything, and I tried to give some options, remove some chess pieces, so none of the administrators lost their job. And I'm sorry for the directors that maybe I sent going to the high school, but I don't control that. I just, I wanted, I would love to, if we could keep everybody's job, and I'm sorry for those people, but we have to keep Lou. That's it. Thanks, everybody.
Good state your name.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi. My name is Catherine O'Gara. I live at 251 Ruse Lane.
Can you repeat your last name, please?
O'Gara.
Thank you.
My question is unrelated to the budget. That's okay right now, right?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, this is going to be super boring for everyone that needs to stretch their legs. This might be a good time. This question and issue may seem very inconsequential to you, given the depth and gravity of everything you've been hearing tonight, but I am having an issue with one of the classrooms at Warrenstorfer for the EL-8 program, and I've talked to the program directors and the principal there, and both have told me that this is an issue that I think was presented to someone on the board, but it just has to do with bathroom accessibility for the preschoolers. I know there are classrooms that have bathrooms in them. I'm not sure what grades are in there, but the preschoolers do not have a bathroom in their classroom, and I know that it has been very difficult for the teachers in there to continue their instruction when they are constantly having to walk three-year-olds and four-year-olds back down the hallway all day long because, you know, they constantly have to go to the bathroom. So, if there's anything that you could do looking into next year, I just kind of keep getting the runaround, and everyone tells me they can't help me, but I know the teachers are really struggling and the kids are struggling. I'm sorry, this is such a silly question for today.
Don't be sorry, not a silly question at all. That's what you're here for.
If you wouldn't mind, if you would give Mrs. Mandler, she has her hand up right over here, if you give her your contact information, and I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Say it again.
Sure.
Do I have to restate everything?
Yes, please.
If you wouldn't mind, for the record, we have to do it, I'm sorry.
Dominic Scolfani, 2 Morgan Place.
Can you say your name again?
Dominic Scolfani.
Thank you.
2 Morgan Place. I came off a little heated before, but I do want to thank everyone for their hard work, especially Dr. Lou Figueroa. And I just want to reiterate how great of a man he is, that I was, I was having a problem a couple of months ago, and he met with me, a former student. He had no obligation to do this. He met with me, took an hour out of his, out of his day, and he met with me, and he had no obligation to do that. Just to reiterate how great of a man he is, I just want to thank all, and again, the board members, you work very hard. Thank you for your time and commitment to this community. Many of you I know personally, so thank you so much. Just reiterate, keep Lou Figueroa.
Hi.
Welcome back. If you could again state your name and address for the record.
Which Seltzer, 590 Route 18. Crazy thought. I've been sitting here listening to everybody, and we've been talking about Lou's salary and, forget Lou's salary, I'm sorry, the position that he holds. Could we pay that? I'm asking a serious que, if I do a GoFundMe and I raise $215,000, can I give it to you, Dr. Julie? Mr. Giuliani? You're the money guy. Can I hand you 215 grand and can he keep his job?
I'll do that. If my taxes have to go up to save him, I'll do it. I'll do it.
I can, listen, I do this for a living. I raise money for a living. I work for a nonprofit. I can raise 215 grand. Can we do it?
Well, first of all, go ahead.
Sir, we don't have back and forth.
I know, but yeah, it's the last one. Come on. Come on.
He's actually a comedian. He doesn't work for a nonprofit.
No, I do work for a nonprofit, the Land or Save Lives Foundation, and I run it. $15 million in 12 years.
What I was saying, what I can just explain to you is that budgets, I don't have a microphone, but a budget, and the board, the board has to make decisions, but a one-time infusion of money doesn't solve a problem, as you know.
So, let me, let me ask you, if I raise $1.5 million to cover him for five years, can I do it?
Well, I can say, citizens can make donations to public entities such as boards of education.
Can I earmark it for his position?
You, you cannot earmark it. You can donate it and indicate what you would wish for it to have, but ultimately, a board would have to decide if it were.
So, I'm putting you on the spot right now. If I give you $1.5 million for five years to keep Lou Figueroa in his position, will you do it?
Sir, I'm not a board member. I'm a lawyer.
Oh, you're not a board member? Then I don't need to talk to you.
Yeah.
I don't need to talk to you if you're not a board member.
I'm giving you, I'm telling you legally.
You're talking about me. I don't need to talk to you. Dr. Valesky.
I don't have a vote on the board.
So, who has a vote?
This is not an interactive, this is not interactive.
I know.
It's not interactive.
It's enough. We, as I said, it's not back and forth. I gave you guidance on the, members of the public can make donations, but that's what I can tell you right now, so.
We'll talk, Mrs. Valesky.
We are not allowed to answer you back, but I, I think it's a very interesting idea, and we will take it into consideration. How's that?
Good. Thank you.
My wife's going to kill me for getting up here again, but I do have budget questions.
But you're going to have to say it.
Mark Fennello, South River. First of all, on the board, my best friend is on the South River School Board, and every day I ask him, why are you on that school board? I don't get it. It's voluntary. It is hectic, and you guys, listen, it's a hard job. Mr. Giuliani, I do have one question.
This is not a question and answer period.
Oh, I can't ask you a budget question?
You can make a statement.
I can make a statement. I'm just curious, with the teacher cuts, how much does that cut into the $7.8 million?
That's kind of my question, that's all. You know, with all the cuts you're dealing with.
If you would like to leave your information, then we can get you an answer on that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the public this evening, to the board, excuse me, this evening? Okay, then I am going to then close the public portion. And due to the late time, I am going to entertain a motion for everything on the Board of Education Agenda this evening. Does anything need separating out? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion. So moved by Mrs. Gloss, second by Mrs. Becker. This is for all discussion on any part of tonight's agenda. Okay, well then, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. Leading us to information items for the good of the cause for the public, committee reports, et cetera, et cetera. It's been quite the evening. Thank you again for everyone. It's been very impassioned. Everyone spoke very well this evening, and a couple of people actually said it. We are all on the same side here, so we take everything you say very seriously. As I said, none of these things make us happy, and I applaud the gentleman with the creative solutions because that's what we got to do. So, thank you, everybody. I see Mrs. Becker waving her hands.
Real quick, I'm on the RPA B Board, Rex Park Advisory Board, and I promised them I would announce two things at the meeting, so I don't want to let them down. One, on June 9th, the rec department is sponsoring an EB Youth Sports Day. It's going to be at Bicentennial Park from 12 to 3:00. There'll be people there from lacrosse, football, cheer, cricket, tennis, and basketball. So, you can get more information on the rec and parks website, if you go on the township website. And the other thing is, starting Monday, the rec department, in conjunction with the East Brunswick Symphony, is going to be offering six weeks of classes taught by Dr. Anna Braun. It is open to anyone 18 years of age and older. We've gotten the.
I think I'm the oldest one up here, so, too bad.
This is the park and rec department. They're doing this with the East Brunswick Symphony. Go on the website, learn about the six-week class taught by Dr. Anna Braun. It's for people 18 years of age and older, and we did get the information to the high school students. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. All righty then, folks, thank you again for coming out. I'm going to entertain a motion, well, we have to have comic relief for adjournment. Nobody wants to go?
I'm making a motion.
Oh, Mrs. Gloss and Mrs. Herrick, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, get home safe.